We are officially recording. We are here for Thursday, May 13th zoning Board of Appeals meeting. And I will leave it to Chairman Katz.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance, or that comes after. Call to order, order, okay. Done that. Pledge of allegiance. You have that little foot, yes, the flag.
Yes.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
To the Republic, for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
With liberty and justice.
For all.
Announce the members who are in attendance.
Roll call.
Welcome.
Okay. Okay, for the roll call, Member Berger.
Here.
Member Cavell.
Here.
Member Meyer.
Here.
Member Scott Meyer. Is he there? I see him. Member Seminovitz, ad hoc member Seminovitz.
Here.
Chairperson Katz.
Here.
Is Member Lukin's on? I don't see her. Okay.
I got it. Hold on.
I think I just saw Scott.
No, he was there and I don't know where he went.
I'm still here.
Oh, okay. Oh, he just can't see you. Okay, Arthur, you can continue with the agenda.
Okay, before we start, before we start proceeding, let me just give a thank you out to Paul.
Somebody. All right, go ahead, Arthur.
Yeah, I just want to say Charlie Picarelli, Laurie DeFrancesco, and Matt Ryan, who served on this board in one capacity or another for many, many years, and did an outstanding service to the village. And I want to thank them all for that and for their service. And they should certainly continue on with great success in their careers. Also want to welcome the new members to the board. And if any one of these new members wants to say a few words, we'll give them, you know, a few seconds to introduce themselves. Richard Berger. Sheldon Meyer. Ad hoc member Jacob Seminovitz.
There.
Okay. Now, does anyone want to say anything, or you're all shy? Okay. Just so that everyone should know, Dan Crashhour, who's our attorney, is here. And Lou Zumo, who is the building inspector, is here. And Yvonne Chusso might be here if we need her. At the moment, we don't. She is the village planner.
Engineer.
What village? Excuse me. And I also want to do a great thank you to Marty Cavell, who's the chairman emeritus, who served this board for many, many years, and from whom I personally learned a lot from. And I want to thank him for his service.
Well, thank you for saying that, Arthur, and I is certainly humble in your presence. And I thank you for saying that very much. We have worked well together and will continue to do so.
Very good. Okay, so thank you for all your services. Who's this? Scott Meyer is, is what? He's, he's here, right?
Yeah, he's on.
Okay, okay. And he's another board member here. And we also have Robert Lukin, who I don't think she's here yet, but she's the ad hoc member here. And I think she's also a chairperson of the Architectural Review Committee. Is that correct?
That is correct, Arthur.
She's an important person to know. Okay, now, let's get on now with the subject of the meeting. First of all, we want to approve the minutes from last session.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have inspected the minutes and I don't have any problem with its its presentation, so I make a motion to approve the minutes of Thursday, February 11th, 2021, as presented by the clerk.
Does anyone want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, so, so can we take a vote on that now?
Well, only the three members that were present can do the all vote on it because the other members weren't present in February. They weren't even on the board. So it would be you, Marty, and Scott Meyer.
Okay, I vote yes, accept the minutes.
Okay. All right.
Who else? Marty?
I vote yes, to accept the minutes as presented.
And who is Scott? Is the third person?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
We're not picking up Scott's audio, and that's going to be a problem.
Scott, we can't hear you. And you're unmuted. I can't hear you. You are unmuted on my side. On your side, you're not. I don't know if you're unmuted.
Can you call him up? Sorry, Arthur, it's just the.
No, I appreciate it.
Arthur, this is your hazing.
Right.
What? I told, I told Arthur, we can't take good care of Arthur here. He is.
Okay, but we can't hear you. He's going to be.
Right, Arthur?
Yes, thank you.
Can't hear you.
You're going to work this out.
You need to go into the app and make sure you have on the app your volume on. Okay. But I can't, oh, you're on the computer? I can't, we can't hear you. You're unmuted on my end, but we can't hear you. Try and talk.
He muted himself again.
Okay.
Unmuted.
Now, I can't hear you on the computer, only on the phone, and we have to continue with the meeting. Okay. Thank you. He said to keep going. He's going to work on it.
Okay.
You know, you that he approves the minutes, and then we'll take your word for it?
Yes, he said he, yes, he's, he's putting a thumbs up.
I'll accept that, and that we have, of the three people who vote, all have accepted the minute. The minute should be deemed accepted. Okay. Now, moving on to, to item number five on the agenda. The public hearing on the application of Mahal Hauraya, which is a religious corporation. And they're applying for variances from Article Four, Section 210-8 of the Village of Ermont zoning code for a variance for maximum developmental coverage. The required bulk dimensions is 3% and proposed bulk dimensions is 9% for the establishments of the cemetery. The plan provides for the formation of approximately 10,200 plus or minus grave sites in 20 sections, provided for 48 vehicles and ancillary driving lanes and walking paths to grave sites. Property is located on the north side of Hillside Avenue, plus or minus 1730, 1,730 feet west of Saddle River Road. The lot is designated as Section 62.14, Block Two, Lot One, on the town around the Puddle Tax Back. The property is located in the RR50 zoning district and is comprised of 19.23 acres. The street address is 44 Hillside Avenue, Ermont, New York, 10952. In case that you're buried in getting mailed, they should know where to send it. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to, okay, Paul Baum is the attorney for the applicant. He's unmuted.
All right, Paul, could you have something to tell us about this application?
No, I think I'll just leave it at that, and you can have the meeting. No, I'm just kidding. Arthur's.
Of course.
I'm, I'm sorry, but it's good to see all the members. It's been a while. So thank you. To introduce myself, my name is Paul Baum. I'm an attorney with the firm of Monta Bono Condon and Frank, 67 North Main Street, New City. We represent the applicant with regard to this project, and we're here basically to introduce the project to you. But to let you know that, as Dan will advise you, the board really can't take any action on this project tonight. We started this project with the planning board in April. And at that time, the planning board indicated their intent to be lead agency for a coordinated secret review. So they adopted a declaration of their intent to be lead agency, which was circulated until they declared themselves lead agency and make a negative declaration. This board really can't take any action with regard to the application. But we're here to introduce you to it, get comments to it, and then come back next month. And hopefully, by that time, the planning board will have reviewed the environmental impacts and hopefully issued a negative declaration because the impacts with regard to this project are very, very minor. So we're sort of under a gun with this project, and I'm not looking to put any pressure on the board. I just want to let you know where we're coming from. We have an elderly rabbi and a spouse that are in illing condition. They want to be buried in the cemetery, so we're trying to move ahead as expeditiously as possible. We've set up a very aggressive time schedule because not only do we need approval from you and the planning board, but we also need the consent of the Rockland County Legislature. And all these meetings and hearings are going basically simultaneously. So we just, you know, request that you give us due consideration and, and hopefully keep the process moving as quickly as, as we can. But I understand there's a lot of issues that the board wants to address, and I understand it's, there's a lot of public comment. And we're, so we're here to, you know, address all the issues raised by the board. We hope at the end of the night that the board will consent or issue its consent to allowing the planning board to be lead agency, so we don't have to wait for 30 days to pass before the planning board can take that action. So we request that the zoning board consent to the planning board, assuming lead agency for the purposes of the secret review. So this, this project, as you've seen from your map, we've got a 19.23 acre property. We're looking to develop approximately 10,200 grave sites on the property. Other than the grave sites, there'll be no structures. We do have to provide minimal number of parking spaces by your code, which I think, I'm not sure whether it's 40 or 48, but we've, we've provided 48 parking spaces. And other than the parking spaces, the project only consists of the ingress and egress road and one internal circulation loop road and a couple of walking paths so that mourners can get to the grave sites to pay their respects to the deceased that will be buried in the cemetery. The the 3% maximum development coverage is, is very, very small. It's the smallest development coverage set forth in your zoning code. And if we were to adhere to a 3% development coverage, we would only have the ability to to put in an entrance and exit road as well as the parking area. Now, we have Dave Ziegler, who's the engineer from Aston Nasher and Ziegler, and he's prepared a, a plan that shows what 3% covers and what the other 6% covers. And he'll share that plan in a moment, but I want you to realize that what we're asking for, even though it may seem like it's three times the amount of development coverage, it's a very, very small amount. If, if you look at all the other uses that are permitted by rights as well as by special permit in this zone, they all have much, much greater development coverages. We could, you know, there's libraries are allowed, museums, art galleries, nursing homes, ambulance corps facilities, schools, hospitals, places of worship. And I would just want to point out, to keep the magnitude of this variance in perspective, this property can be developed for a school with dormitories for 200 students, 34 dwelling units, which consists of about 174,000 square feet in total, plus parking for 212 vehicles. That use would only have a development coverage of 21.4%, and it would be permitted because the development coverage for that use would be 25%. We can build a three-story, 50,000-square-foot hospital for 350 beds, plus a 10,000-square-foot outpatient facility, plus a 10,000-square-foot office building with parking for 450 vehicles. That would not be the variance from the development coverage because that would come out to about 28% development coverage, where 30% development coverage is allowed for hospitals. We can build a 50,000-square-foot house and still meet the development coverage and not need any variances. We're not asking for those kinds of things. What we're asking is for basically a very park-like, pristine development where.
Actually, on that, on that, on that last example you gave, you could build it without any approval of any board, the single-family home.
That's correct. That's correct. And, and we could, and we could develop 20% of the lot with no planning board and no zoning board oversight or approvals. Thank you for pointing that out there. So, you know, when we talk about a 3% development coverage, and we're going to 9%, our 9% is still, you know, one-fifth of, of what you can do if we build the school. It's, it's less than one-half if you're building a house. It's, it's less than one-third if you're building a hospital or a convalescent home. So I urge the board to keep that, you know, in, in perspective of really what we're asking for here. The, the only thing that we're putting in here is the required parking, access for ingress and egress of vehicles, and one simple loop road. So what I'd like to do is ask Dave Ziegler if he could share that plan of the 3% development coverage, so the board can, you know, get a good visual of what it looks like. Do you have that available?
Yes.
I shared my screen.
Okay, Dave, you want to take the board through, through what you're, they're looking at here?
Right. In front of you is drawing number one from the plan set that we submitted to the planning board. And on the bottom is Hillside Avenue. North is straight up. So what I've done here is I highlighted in orange the area that would be limited at 3%. That's a 20-foot ingress on the right, and then you have the parking spaces. And then you have a 20-foot exit. And that's 3%. Or, as I show in red at the bottom of the map, 25,130 square foot. The request that we're proposing is three times that, and it would include all the rest of the loop road. As you see, when you come in, the entrance on your right, you could loop the entire site. Now, each one of those sections are at least 500 plots. So the loop would go around that entire site at 20-foot. That meets the code for emergency vehicles, and it's really wide for a cemetery, but that's, that's part of the code. And that area cannot be paved by the 3%. And there's really no other kind of material that we can use. Your code is very strict in what it calls pores, and even gravel, hard-packed dirt, all of that is considered part of the coverage. So the only way that that could be left, if the variance isn't granted, it would have to be grass. So that, that's, that's the impact is the loop road. And, and there's a little bypass road above the parking lot there. All of them are 20-foot and the minimum length for access to the site.
So let me translate that. This, the, the loop road is what's causing the need for the variance.
Correct.
How, how the loop road or the materials that are used for the loop road in essence are what are causing the need for the variance.
Right. You're correct. So as, as the board can see, we're, we're not looking to excessively pave this project. We're providing ingress and egress, which we have to have. We're providing the minimal parking space required by your code. And we're providing one, one loop road to go around the cemetery so that people will be able to pay their respects to the, to the grave sites. There's no structures, and we don't think that this is a terribly object, objectionable plan since we're only providing for minimal, minimal requirements. And, and really, we don't have any other alternatives because the only alternative is to just to pave the entrance and the parking lot and, and leave it at that and not provide any internal road network. But, you know, it, it's not really the best idea if mourners have to come and park and walk up to the back of the gravesite. People come, they park on the side of the road near the gravesite, and it's, it's just a, a good service and a good thing for the visitors to have. And I, I think it's, it's probably something that the planning board wants as well for traffic circulation and for emergency services and ambulance, so to speak. So that's here what we're looking for. The additional runoff that's going to be created by this impervious surface is all going to be detained through a stormwater management facility that'll be reviewed and approved by the village's engineering consultants. There will be a stormwater pollution prevention plan that will be in accordance with the guidelines dictated by the New York State DEC. And it will comply with those regulations. And, you know, that's about it for the project. And so we're here asking the board to, to grant us this minimal variance from 3% to 9% so that we can install these minimal improvements to facilitate the operation of this cemetery.
Can I ask something? Anticipating some of the questions that were raised during the last meeting before the planning board on this application. One, is it your intention to phase the project? And if so, can you please explain that, what that entails? And then two, what are your plans in the event of a service for a revered rabbi with a large following?
Let me take the last question first. So there was concerns that there may be a, a very large mass gathering for a distinguished rabbi or other member of the community that deceased, and there may be a lot of mourners coming to pay their respects. If something like that happens, it's a very, very minimal thing. We've submitted a traffic impact statement to the planning board. The, you know, the normal, the normal summit, the service, I should say, is probably, I, I think they have no more than four or five a month. You know, 20 to 25 mourners. And it's, it's all outlaid in the traffic plan, and we'll be happy to submit that traffic impact study to the zoning board as well. But we have come up because there have been concerns because Hillside is, is, is narrow, and it's now one-way because it's blocked off at the New Jersey border. There were concerns over a lot of traffic in the event that we did have a large gathering. And the applicant has developed a traffic management plan in conjunction with the local hover rim as well as the police department. And in the event of such a type of funeral, mass funeral event, they have arrangements to have buses at an off-site location. The buses will bring the mourners to the cemetery. The burial will take place. It's going to last no more than one or two hours, and then the buses will depart. Other than the buses and maybe vehicles for the relatives of the deceased, no other traffic will be permitted on Hillside Avenue. Hillside Avenue will be manned with parking attendants to make sure that nobody squeezes in and parks on the side of the road. They'll also have parking attendants at the intersection of Saddle River Road and Hillside to make sure that no cars can go down Hillside Avenue except for local residents and obviously emergency services. So we will be happy to submit that traffic management plan to the zoning board as well. We have recently submitted it to the planning board. So that's the first question with, I was going to your second question. With regard to your first question, I'll turn that over to Dave because Dave can talk about how the phasing works in conjunction with the stormwater management plan and to be in compliance with DEC. Dave, you want to explain how it works?
Yeah, part of the site plan set has the off-site drainage, the onsite drainage, and then the construction phasing. The first phase, because this is roughly 10 acres and you can only disturb five acres at a time, yet it has to be in a, in a way that construction can be carried through. So the first phase is the entrance and the parking and all the sections on the right. And that includes the wall, which you'll see between the orange and the property line. There's a thin, straight line going up through. That's a retaining wall. So all of the front, the parking, and all the sections on the right, which is two, four, six, eight, 10, and so on, that, that would be construction one. Construction two would be the center section and the rest of the loop. And then the last construction, which would be three, would be all the sections over on the left side and that one spur road underneath Section 17. So each of those three sections, none of them exceed five acres. They're really around 4.3, 4.2 acres. And then the last one's just less than two. So that would meet the DEC code, and then that would also include, the first section would be the onsite drainage stormwater facility and also be the erosion control for the construction. The way the phases go is, is the first section of construction would have to be completely finished. It would have to be paved, gravelled, and the grass would have to be grown before you can move on to the second section. You can't do one section and have it half-finished. It has to be completely finished, and then you move to the second section. And when the second section is paved and grassed and grass is growing, then you can move to the third. All that would be inspected during construction for a SWIP on a daily, no, excuse me, on a weekly schedule.
Thank you. And Arthur?
Yes, sir.
Marty here. I have a question, if I may. Okay, either whoever wants to answer it, Paul, Mr. Baum. A portion of the site, I'm, I, I understand, is located in federal wetlands. Whereabout on, on that property is, is that, or is it part of the, the greater property? What is, can you illuminate that?
Can you put the whole page on?
Yeah, I'll, I'll leave.
Okay, well. Answer that, so.
Yeah, what we just did was we now have the whole page on in front of you. And if you look, you got, you have two little amoebas over there on the left. That's the wetlands, and the 100-foot adjacent to it is depicted where you see the line with the writing on it. So neither one of those wetlands, which were flagged and detailed, and a report created by Jim Bates out of Wallkill, neither one of those wetlands are in the construction area or. Neither one of those wetlands are in the construction area or in part of this planned development area.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to get that clarified. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, where where?
I'm here. Arthur?
We can hear you, Scott.
Can or can?
Yes, I yes, we can, yes.
Uh what, okay, I have a question, uh well, numerous questions, but I'll start with one right now. Um I'm assuming that these funerals will be during the daytime, that this will not be a twenty-four hour operation?
The 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 cemetery will be closed from dusk to dawn. And most most of the uh services will take place in the morning. There may be an occasional afternoon service. Um uh you know, I can't really, we can't really control that all the time. But there will be no access to the cemetery after dark and uh gates are proposed for the entrance and exits to uh eliminate access to the premises after dark.
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah. Yeah, so I can hear you, Scott. About where the background noise is coming from. It's hard to see the plan on. Okay.
Okay, we're good?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Did we let was my daughter coming uh home with ice cream?
Oh, okay, I didn't know where it was coming from, thank you. Is she going to share with everyone?
I I gotta see if she got me anything.
You have to share.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Meyer?
Uh I'm good right now, thank you.
I have a question, where where's the parking lot on this?
I think it's in the orange uh sector there, right?
Yeah, the the rectangular area, you want it right there. That that's the parking area.
I thought that was the entrance uh exit.
No, the the little legs on the side, the left and the right is the entrance and exit. This the the square rectangular area in the middle is the parking area. Hillside's down at the bottom.
Okay.
All right. I mean, someone has to walk, if someone needs to go to a section, uh one of the top sections, they're gonna have to walk.
If that if that road isn't paved, then it's going to be grass, so uh depending on the weather, you would have to walk. And that's about uh almost eight hundred foot. It's eight hundred foot back from the parking area on both sides and it's around three hundred foot between them, so it would be a good exercise, that's for sure.
Well, if the road is in and where they, so that ones parked on the road, that's what you're saying?
If the road is in, somebody could drive up through to the section, drop somebody off and then come back down. It's a one-way up on the up on the east and across going west and then dropping down on the south. You could drop somebody off and come back and park and then that driver would have to walk up, yes. If if that's at a light funeral, if you're going to visit somebody, you could actually park on the road. That's why the road is twenty foot wide. If you park on the road, somebody could pass you while you're parked there.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, that's so mean.
She's out it for me, you could see it?
I can see it.
She did a great job.
A loop road in a cemetery is 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 very, very common, most cemeteries that I'm familiar with. Um that's where the mourners park. They, you know, they'll follow them to the cemetery, they'll pull up along the side of the road, they'll be parking attendants guiding them where to park. Um and 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 that's where they normally park. So you'll have four, five, six, seven cars there for a service. Um eh you know, we we provided a parking area because the code says we need to have forty parking spaces. So um we've created a a a parking area. But again, uh this is not an excessive amount of uh of um roadway in here. It's one single loop road that goes up around the cemetery and ingress and egress and parking, that that's all we have.
Uh is anyone else on the board have want to make a comment or a statement or a question?
No, I'm good, Arthur.
I don't see anyone else, uh okay. But then uh let's have a motion to open this up to the public.
Okay, Dave, I'm gonna, if you can close your screen, I'm gonna need to see everybody.
I'll make that motion, Arthur.
Oh, okay, exactly. Anyone second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Uh who, uh are any members of the public, can you somehow signify so that Dan can recognize you?
Um if you can put your name in the chat, I will um call on you. I did get one question, I don't know if the person will speak, I'm trying to find her, Carol Jacobs. If she's still on. She sent me, I'm I'm gonna unmute her. Carol, you had a question if you'd like to ask it? I'm trying to unmute her, but she's not unmuting. Um I can read her question, do the plans include any building structure? Which I answered no. Um and bathroom facilities, water access for lawn maintenance?
Yeah, so who's gonna answer that question?
Dave Ziegler.
Yeah, Dave, if you want to answer that, you're muted, Dave.
I I didn't, I didn't really hear the first part of it, something about lawn ma- maintenance and?
Um the question was, uh are are there any building structures, which you said in the beginning, there will not be at this point? Bathroom facilities, water access for lawn maintenance?
Water access?
It just says water access for lawn maintenance. I guess they're wondering if there's going to be something, I I'm trying to have her.
You know what I'm trying, I'm trying to find out if there's going to be any plumbing lines, water lines, et cetera.
No.
Well, then how will you maintain the lawn without water?
Uh just like every other cemetery, uh it's Mother Nature. Uh cemeteries don't have underground sprinkler systems. So there's there's proposed no buildings and no utilities into the site, no utilities.
No lights or like that? And and for washing hands when you leave the cemetery, you're not going to provide that as a facility?
I I didn't catch that, I didn't catch the whole.
And for the ritual of washing hands when you leave a cemetery, you're not going to provide for that at all either then?
I'll let Sam answer that one.
Um where is Sam?
He was there somewhere.
Yeah, he's there, I'm trying to ask him to unmute.
Oh, there he is.
Sam?
Yes, for now, there's no plan whatsoever for anything other than grave sites.
Well, there is, there are going to be, there are going to be lights, lights are proposed, but there's no proposed water, there's no sewer. And if they need water for any sort of rituals, they would bring um uh they'll they'll bring some water with them to the service and make it available for for those mourners that that wish to wash their hands before they leave the cemetery.
Paul, let me just make a statement to make it very clear, this is not a place where eulogies are going to take place. This is only only a burial site, which means everything else and all the services will take place at the local synagogue. They're only bringing the body here to bury.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or would like to speak at the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Hearing, oh, for the commentary from the public, uh make a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, wait, someone, I just text, uh just uh Danielle Meehan, I'm trying.
Okay.
I'm asking her to unmute.
Sorry about that. Hi, um hi, um Danielle Meehan, Ackerman Avenue. Um that sounds not coming from me, I don't know what that is, uh no one else is here in my home. Um I um, the um percentage of graves per um acreage is is very high. It's my understanding um that generally it's not more than one thousand per acre. And this is higher than it. Is there any reason why it's such um, it it is such a high ratio?
Uh we've done many cemeteries, we just uh finished two. Uh one in Nannuit, one in Havastroll, and uh they all have the same ratio. Uh and the ratio is created by the pathways and um it a thousand isn't even close. Uh you you know, you could figure uh three by eight or four by eight, some are four by nine with two foot walkways, but it's much more than that.
Okay, I'm not going to argue, Mr. Ziegler, I just was told by um someone who runs a number of cemeteries that the um industry standard is generally not exceeded uh but one thousand per acre, graves per acre. Um and just so people can get um an idea, um perspective, um Ascension Cemetery, which is right in the vicinity of this currently four thousand um people interred there, over thirty-five acres. Um so certainly um in comparison, it's a very high uh ratio. So I I just wanted to make that observation. And um, Mr. Baum, I just wanted to say, um you may not be aware of this, sir, but you can't just build a hospital. You have to go through what's called the Certificate of um Medical Need with the state of New York. And then you have to go through the federal government. So um next time you're giving possibilities of what could be built there, probably a hospital isn't one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, uh is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I don't see anyone, um there are two people on the phone, I'm just looking. I I don't know. If if anyone who's on the phone wants to speak, they I'll, they can be unmuted. I don't see anyone else. I know one person called me, but I don't see that phone number that said he might want to speak. Uh there's someone that's unmuted, go ahead. Person who ends in phone number one, 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 four, four, two, would you like to speak? Hello? No, I'm, no, I don't have anyone else at this point.
Mr. Chairman? Dan? This, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I I want to ask Dan. Make some sort of motion that to that we give consent for the planning board to be the lead agency for CEQA?
Yes.
Okay, so then um if someone makes a motion?
I'll make, I'll I'll make two motions. One, uh that we um accede to the uh planning board to be the lead agency with respect to uh
you consent to the planning board?
What word did I say, Dan?
Accede?
Accede to, yeah, wrong, wrong choice of word, I'll use whatever word you want.
It's your motion.
I I make a motion that the zoning board of appeals consents to the planning board of the village of Ammon to be the lead agency with respect to the State Environmental Equality Review Act.
With regard to the this particular?
With regard to this application, um Har Shalom Cemetery, forty-four Hillside Avenue, Ammon, New York.
I'll second, Marty.
Okay, um the person that called me today that said that they were gonna want to speak at the public hearing is now on, may I unmute them?
Well, we have to vote on this.
After you vote.
Yeah, after.
You vote, yes.
Paul, have a poll the roll.
Okay, um member mayor? Do you vote to agree to consent to the planning board to be lead agency with respect to this application for Har Salam Cemetery at forty-four Hillside Ave?
Yes, I do.
Okay, um mem- member Burger?
Yes, I do.
Okay, uh member Meyer? Scott Meyer? I look, I can't hear you, Scott Meyer. Um.
Not good, you gotta call him.
Member Cavell?
I vote yes.
Okay, chairperson Katz?
I vote yes.
All right, he's off, so I uh.
Well, we have four in favor, right? So it's gonna?
Four in favor, yes.
It'll pass no matter what he says.
Yes.
Uh Dan, is that enough?
I still think he's beyond, yeah, but he's he's a sitting member, he should be on the record. So is there?
I'm, yeah, my thing froze.
You're a yes, okay, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Arthur, I got excited there.
So um all the favor and and the uh motion passes?
Okay.
All right, Arthur, I I I had made a second motion, but the
Yeah, but we have.
That it, that there's somebody uh wishing to make a comment, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll hold the motion.
Uh the phone number that ends in three, four, three, three, I'm unmuting you. You said you wanted to speak when you called me this afternoon. You have to unmute yourself? If you want to speak.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you're unmuted.
Wonderful, okay, um so uh right, Stephen Klein. And it's seventy-three Regina Road. And
Excuse me, sir, sir, excuse me, Arthur?
Yeah.
People giving testimony need to be sworn in with all their respect.
No problem.
All right, do you swear or affirm that the second testimony you're about to hear will be truthful for the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, Arthur, but thank you.
Well, thank you.
Nope, that's that's fine, that's fine, I have no problem with that, thank you. So uh my my comment is that I've been to this site repeatedly and I've, you know, seen the proposal. And it's not a ten percent or twenty percent or thirty percent, forty percent or fifty, even a hundred percent. There's a three hundred percent you know, over what is required. This is, and I've seen personally and, you know, I'm glad I'm under oath because I'm happy to say that I've seen the D E C maps, the EPA maps and even the uh Army Corps maps, okay? And I know that this, the water that is draining in that area goes to the Hackett-Sack River watershed. And I know that you guys, you know, that that the board just moved to uh send this, the the environmental consideration to to planning, but I did want to get on the record as saying that. And this is, this is another old growth forest that has benefit for everyone. And there were other aspects that that that, you know, rather than wait to do this in segments, that this clear cutting was gonna take place. I think that the sign that the uh public hearing uh sign, the sign, the tree, excuse me, the tree that the public hearing sign is on, has got to be at least a hundred, it's got to be over a hundred years old. And all the trees, all of these trees are old growth trees. And going up and down Hillside, you know, this is, and this doesn't have to do with you, but I'm going to say it now because I'm going to say it again at at another public meeting. No reality-based traffic study could pass muster for the the level of of disruption to the quality of life that the residents, that the residents would have to deal with. And it's just, I know it's redundant because that's not something that that we're you know, talking about, you know, specifically at this at this hearing. But I wanted to say it anyway because I, you know, and I I try to imagine all the heavy equipment and all the noise and all, everything that has is going to be imposed on on the people who live there, who have on, on the people who live there, who have spoken respectfully as to the nature of this project. Well, I want to say this, when you, when you make a request like this, and this is, you, you're doing this imposition. I'm wondering who, who doesn't respect who? And with that, I thank you for this opportunity to speak. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any?
If anybody else would like to speak, please put your name in the chat.
Okay, Marty, you had a question?
No, I had a motion. If there's no other person in the public wishing to make a comment.
Okay.
My motion would be simply to close the public hearing on the matter of Har Shalom Cemetery. That's it.
When it comes up to discussion, I'd like to say something.
All right, first, you need a second. Does anyone second that motion?
I'll second.
All right, so discussion. I'm wondering if it isn't better to continue the public hearing to a date certain in light of the fact that you can't take an action tonight, it has to go to the planning board. You don't know what's going to happen at the planning board. And if something changes at the planning board and you've already closed and it has an impact on the required variances, you have to go through the whole thing all over again with re-advertising. Whereas if you continue the public hearing to a date and time certain, you can continue to continue with, or make changes. Any thoughts on that, Mr. Bound?
I have no objection to that. I, I sort of expected the planning board, I mean, the zoning board would adjourn the public hearing rather than close it, just in case some people that weren't able to attend tonight may, may want to speak at the next meeting. So we have no objection to adjourning the public hearing to, to the next meeting so that any additional information can be submitted and, and you know, we intend to submit the traffic study as well as the traffic management plan for the board's information. So if anybody wants to comment on that. So I, I don't have any objection to that.
All right, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, under the advice of counsel. I'll, I'll, we already voted on that motion, so I'll form a new motion.
No, you never voted on that motion.
Oh, we didn't vote? We only had a second.
We were in discussion.
Can I retract the motion?
Yes.
I retract the motion. That the public hearing be closed. And instead, I will insert the following motion that, under the advice of counsel, that we adjourn the public hearing until a date certain.
Let's, let's get the date and time from Suzanne.
Okay, the the next zoning board meeting is June 10. And since we already have a GML and some of the comment letters, I wouldn't need the five weeks notice, so or four weeks notice. So as long as you could submit anything else you wanted to submit two weeks prior to that, that is the next ZBA meeting. June 10 at 8:00 PM via Zoom unless for some reason we're meeting in person.
Okay. Hey, is that, that your motion, Mr. Cavell?
I'll take it. That would be my, that would be my motion.
Do we have a second?
Okay, was that Sheldon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it's at June 10, you said?
June 10 at 8:00 PM.
Okay. I think you need a vote on the motion.
We need a vote on that.
I need a vote. I was just going to ask for that. Do you want me to do role call?
Yeah, poll the roll, poll the call.
Okay. Mr. Berger?
I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Meyer, Scott Meyer?
Yes.
Sheldon, Mayor?
Yes.
Marty Cavell?
I vote aye.
Arthur Katz, Chairperson? Okay.
And for the public. Because the meeting was continued, the public hearing was continued to a date and time certain. This is the only official notice that you'll be getting. It will be on the village website, but you won't be getting any letters or postings as you did, or may have, if you were in the area for mailings and postings for that June meeting.
Dan, I have here is a Rockland County Sewer District letter. Do we have to read, one for the Department of Planning, do we have to read that into the record now?
Not now. You, you can, you could, by virtue of what you just did, you can read it at the next meeting. At the continued public hearing.
Okay. All right, they're moving on.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Good to see you all. Okay, all right, the next item on the agenda, public hearing, the application of V C U S A for approval to add the small drive-through to the existing Dunkin' Donuts and a small addition here in the different building with a drive-up window, a walk-in box, additional signs for the service, an additional planting and fencing. The application is considered a fast food restaurant, which will require a special permit and will require variances from Article 3, Section 210-21 E. paragraph 11. Parenthesis 11, Article 4, Section 210-28, attachment 1. Table 8. Article 6, Section 210-56-A. Parentheses 19, 21, and 25. For five variances. Minimum lot area, lot width, front setback, a north to bond, front yard, north of Ammont. Front yard. North to bond, side setback, top setback, side yard, rear setback, rear yard, developmental coverage. Buffer from residential areas and spaces and a parking waiver. The parking spaces, yes, includes a parking waiver, that's the request. The property is located on the west side of North Ammont Road at the intersection of North to Bond Avenue. This lot is designated as Section 55.07 Block 2, Lot 8, on the town of Ramapo Tax Back. The property is located in the V C zoning district and is comprised of 0.74 acres. The street address is 14 North Air, New York, 10901. Okay, is there anyone here for the applicant?
Yes, my name is Ken Moran. I'm an attorney for the applicant. I'll start off. I'd like to just give an overview of our project and then we have a number of other consultants who will go into more detail. But I just want to go over in general what we're proposing. The application is for an existing gas station, convenience store, Dunkin' Donuts to add a drive-through where the Dunkin' Donuts, this property, I think you're probably all familiar with it, is on the northwest corner of the intersection of North Ammont Road and North Devon Avenue. There's a traffic light there. And the gas station is located directly across the street from the former Friendly's restaurant. We're proposing to construct a drive-through where the Dunkin' Donuts with a small addition in the rear of the building. And also we're proposing to make some revisions to the parking and to the access to the site. The property is a V C Village Center zone. And the addition of the drive-through changes the use. Now Dunkin' Donuts now would be considered a restaurant use. But by adding the drive-through and not changing anything else, it would change the use to a fast food restaurant. And this is important because the fast food restaurant requires not only site plan approval, special permit approval, and it requires also a buffer or any residential zone or property in a residential zone that adjoins it. The fast food restaurant has a different bulk regulations. They're much more require much more distance on the different bulk regulations. And most of the variances, which we'll put up a chart that we're requesting is because it is now classified as a fast food restaurant. Although the only difference from the existing operation is the fact that it's going to have a drive-through. And we'll post that in a minute. It'll show the list of variances. Without the designation as fast food, we would only be requesting three variances, but there's, by adding that, there's 13 or 12 or 13 variances that are required. And this is because of the bulk regulations, which the requirements are, are increased considerably because it's considered a fast food use rather than just a restaurant. Also, by adjoining a residential zone, which is shown on here, North Devon Avenue, to the rear is the Ammont Gardens Senior Housing. But it's not that close to the proposed drive-through. In fact, it's about 250 feet to the first building, to the edge of the first building of that. So it's a considerable distance. So you still have to provide a buffer, but we do not have enough room on site. So we've gone through a number of different things to have a buffer that will accomplish the same thing as having the buffer on site. And we've been to the C D R C and the planning board a number of times and have addressed their comments regarding the layout of the site. We have an engineer, surveyor, landscape architect, traffic consultant, and other professionals who have plans and drawings with, with revisions according to the comments that we've received. This is a type 2 action, which means it requires no further environmental review. And the proposed drive-through has been reviewed by the fire department and building inspector. And it's been determined that fire trucks and emergency vehicles will be able to access the rear of the property when a drive-through is constructed. Some of the parking spaces have been relocated to improve circulation on site. And we also are proposing to close the southerly entrance and exit off of North Ammont Road, just have one entrance on North Ammont Road. And then we'll add an additional exit from the drive-through onto North Devon Avenue. And what this will do is anybody who gets into the drive-through lane will be able to get their order and then act, exit the site onto North Devon without going through the gas station or through any of the parking area. So by doing the drive-through, we're actually going to improve the circulation both internally and externally on the roads. It has no negative impact by doing this. In fact, we've gone through this and it shows that the circulation will be much improved, that nobody will cut through by the gas pumps or anything like that to go to the convenience store or the Dunkin' Donuts. Now, you might wonder why we're putting in this, there's quite a, you know, bit of work we've already gone through and planning and so forth. Why we're doing this, why we're, you know, expending this money? Well, the simple answer is COVID-19. It has changed the way many people shop, okay? It's changed the way people think about drive-throughs. And it appears that even with the vaccines and other precautions of mass and so forth, that many people's shopping habits have changed. And it's not likely to return to the way it was before the pandemic. And we noticed that the Dunkin' Donuts that do not have drive-throughs, their business is way down since the pandemic started. And it's clear that people prefer the drive-through where they do not have to get out of the car. They can just get their order and then leave without having contact with people in the store. And this is, this is the way I believe that things are going to be for quite a while. And I don't think it's ever going to get back to normal and you know, it seems like it's been forever, but it's been already over a year. So we don't feel that this proposal will have any negative impacts and actually will have positive impacts on the surrounding areas and the neighborhood in general. Now, just to be clear, that where it's located, to the south of the site is North Devon Avenue, which actually is a private road. And that private road is in the residential zone. So we have to provide a buffer for North Devon Avenue on that site, even though it's just a road. There's no houses or anything that need to be protected. To the north is the O and R substation. Again, it's another use that does not have to be protected, but that's the north side of it. To the east side is North Ammont Road, and across the street is the old Friendly's, former Friendly's Restaurant. In the rear is where the senior housing is located. However, I said before, it's over 250 feet before you reach the first building. So it's a substantial distance. So to compensate for the lack of buffer on the property, we have a landscape architect and we've proposed extensive plantings and fencing, a number of different locations. So that the residential area is going to be buffered from this use. And the positive effect certainly outweighs any other consideration. Majority of the customers, like I said, are rather have a drive-through rather than go into the store. And that's been the experience at multiple Dunkin' Donuts. So now I would like to have the experts go through the presentation. And when they're completed, I will go through the, we believe, I believe that the request for variance meets all the requirements for, for the area of bulk variances that we're requesting. But I'll go through that and show you how it meets it and summarize what we've presented to the board. Okay, so I don't know who wants to start. Phil, do you want to start with the traffic? I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, I, I can go into the traffic unless
Unless somebody else
Wants to start just with the comparison either, either way.
Phil and Ken, this is Dave. If you don't mind, let me just kind of give a brief overview of the, the chart we have prepared of the packages, if that's okay, Susan?
Of course.
Okay, good. So what I, what I have shown on the, on the screen here, as Ken mentioned, there's, there's some variants proposed with this development. And that's what's shown here under scenario two, right, is, is the proposed improvements. The, on the, on the left is what's existing today, right? So the existing improvements for the gas station that has Dunkin' today would, has, there's still pre-existing non-conforming with the existing development, right? And then if with our proposed development, that number went up to 13, one of which is a parking waiver. But what I'm trying to point out here is if this was developed in scenario one as just a hypothetical non-fast food versus being classified as fast food, developed exactly the same plan that Stephen and Phil will go through. uh being classified as fast food, developed exactly the same plan that Stephen and Phil will go through. It would only require three variances. So so what's really kind of driving the difference between um the thirteen variances is the classification of fast food. So with with that, I kind of want to, I'll I'll turn it over to uh uh Phil and Steve to kind of talk them through the difference between the existing uh existing plan and what we're proposing today.
Dave, can you advance the uh to the
Yeah, you want to start with the existing or go to the proposed?
It's just start with the existing. That's perfect. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, this is Philip Greeley from Kyers Engineering and Design. This plan depicts the current conditions on the site. Uh, as Ken described before, there is a single driveway to North of the Bond Avenue at the bottom of your page. And then there's two existing driveway connections to North Airmont Road. And everybody is familiar with the traffic on North Airmont Road. Um, early in the process, uh, we uh discussed with Rockland County Highway Department. Uh, this was late last uh fall, uh October of last year about the site and what we were planning to do. And uh, we discussed the closure of the southerly driveway. That's the driveway closest to the traffic signal on North Airmont Road. And the two reasons for that, number one is the proximity to the signal. Uh, traffic backs up past that driveway and it's difficult uh for people to move in and out of there as it is. And also it creates some other, you know, conflict points uh in that area of the site. So um, as you can see on this plan, uh, you know, Dunkin' is already inside the building, which is on the left hand side. Uh, but there is no drive through. Uh, most people park up at the north end of the lot and go into the store. Um, but there's intermixing of that traffic with the gasoline traffic near the pumps, et cetera. Um, some people do already uh pull in the area in front of the store, uh, which is really a fire zone and loading zone area. So uh we're planning to improve the circulation on the site by closing that driveway. Uh, maybe we could just go to the proposed plan and I can describe that without repeating what Ken already uh mentioned. Uh, Ken covered a lot of the items already. So on this drawing, um on the right hand side along North Airmont Road, the southern driveway is being closed. Uh, we are providing uh over near where the uh tire and the vacuum area, we're providing a couple of spaces there. Uh, probably mostly used for employees and we're creating a uh uh entry area. Most of the traffic comes in and out of North of Bond uh to this site. Uh, if they're coming from the south and or if they're exiting out to get to the light also. Um, so we're creating a drive aisle along the eastern side of the property. We're widening the pavement area there so that we can create a full ten foot wide aisle adjacent to where there could be vehicles at the pump. And we've given that a generous ten foot area of separation. Um, any traffic coming from the north on uh North Airmont Road, which a good portion of that traffic today going to the gasoline or Dunkin' makes a right turn in and proceeds directly into the drive through lane that that circulates around the back of the building. So in the gray, dark gray area is the new pavement area. Uh, and we're creating a drive through lane and a full bypass lane. So that if somebody wanted to circulate uh and they were that portion of the site and they weren't going to the drive through or they didn't want to wait on the line, they could circulate around uh those vehicles and then exit out onto North the Bond. Um, right now, uh, the driveways uh on North Airmont Road uh do does have people that make left turns, uh not many, but uh they are restricted, but the signing and the control of that is not appropriate. So in discussions with the county, in addition to closing off the southern driveway, we will be formalizing uh what is a right turn in and right turnout driveway at the north end of the property. Uh, with additional signing, uh which conforms with current standards. So that we don't have people trying to make either left turns in or left turns out at that point. But that traffic is directed down to North the Bond where the traffic signal exists. Uh, as Ken indicated before, a couple of other modifications that are being done, we're providing uh parking spaces, the dark gray down at the end here, uh which is in close proximity to the building. And those people can pretty much walk without having to go into the traffic flow. Uh, there is also a designated loading area on the south side of the building. Uh, the area in pink is where the addition is and where the drive through will be. The drive through window is at the southern end of that building, the bottom end of that building. And what we've done is we've created this full bypass and new driveway connection so that anybody at the drive through doesn't have to intermix with the gas traffic. So we are cleaning up that movement. Um, we maintain the bypass uh lane and traffic exiting will be funneled into a single lane where they enter on to North the Bond. And there will be adequate site distances provided there to uh allow vehicles to exit. Also, by exiting at that point, we have them further away from the signals so that they have area to queue up approaching the signal, which should improve their ability when they're exiting out of there. Um, in terms of, you know, traffic, uh, the traffic study, uh, we had a lot of data that was uh available for the North Airmont Road and this intersection pre-COVID. Uh, we also had counts to get the turning movements at the gas facility uh and and convenience store and Dunkin' as it existed uh late last year to understand the the directional patterns where people were coming to and from. Uh, in terms of the additional traffic, and again, I point out that we have a Dunkin' here already. Uh, in terms of the additional traffic for this added area and the drive through, we've assumed that all of the trips generated by that area would be new trips. So we haven't taken any credits uh in our analysis to be conservative. Uh, as you would expect, you know, most of the traffic to that this type of facility is attracted from the existing traffic stream. Uh, but we've assumed that those are all new trips. Uh, the traffic study was reviewed by the village's uh consultant, Nelson Pope Voorhees, the traffic consultant. Uh, he had uh reviewed and approved the previous plan back in December. Uh, as Ken pointed out in the discussions with the planning board, uh originally, we did not have this separate driveway coming out at the back. We had traffic coming back into the main area and the planning board suggested to separate those two. Uh, so the traffic consultant felt that was an additional improvement. And he provided additional uh approvals of uh the study and the layout uh as part of his review. Our Rockland County Highway Department will require us to get permits, but they've conceptually approved this layout. Uh, we will also get into some of the additional landscaping along the county highway that will be done. And we will get a permit to uh install those plantings. The plantings will be positioned to not block any sight lines. Uh, but uh, conceptually, they are in agreement with the plan. And I think that covers the main points. Uh, we feel this is an improvement in terms of uh separation of Dunkin' traffic from the the gas pump traffic. And we provide uh twelve total parking spaces here. Uh, but you know, the the loading area, which today is is really just in the they pull in front of the building. Uh, we have a designated loading area by developing this plan just south of the building. So with that, I think those are the main points I wanted to cover and we can take a look at the landscaping plan at this time, Dave, you think?
Uh, yeah, you know, I think right before we get to that, uh, I'm going to ask uh to kind of walk us through what we kind of feel the the impact is on the adjacent uses, you know, uh, as we kind of showed in that bulk table where the variances are are really they're really uh property buffer and setback related. So we kind of want to take you through on, you know, uh, the impact that we have on our neighbors. Um, and and Jeff, are you available?
I am, yeah. And it's really just uh kind of reinforcing what Ken uh and you, Dave, and Phil have already said. Uh, the impact on the neighbors, uh, which I think the the variances that we're requesting are designed to uh the the code is to to minimize the impact on the neighbors. If you look to the north, we've got the uh, the power substation that already has significant buffering uh between us and that property. So uh, in our estimation, impact is negligible there. Uh, when you look to the east, we're uh, you know, we've got Airmont Road and commercial across the street to the south of us. Uh, we've got North to Bond Road and again, more commercial directly across the street from us. Really, the only neighbor that is uh potentially impacted is to the rear uh in Airmont Gardens. And um, you know, as Ken has already stated, there's over two hundred and fifty feet between us and the the nearest building in there that has residences in it. And we have a working agreement right now with the the owners of Airmont Garden. We've started to engage their attorneys to uh to have them uh grant us an easement uh so that we can finish the work up and, you know, cut the new driveway um for the exit. And uh, it's as far as impact goes, they're in favor of this project. So they're they're really get this in total. There's no impact of any real uh, you know, uh importance on any of our neighbors at all uh here. And as Phil already stated, net net, we we've improved the uh the circulation on the site itself. Um, and the the addition of the drive through is really a necessity for us at this point uh just for the ongoing health of the business. So uh, we feel that this is uh all in all, an improvement over the existing site, uh, not just, you know, what we're requesting, so.
Thanks, thanks, Jeff. And in the last uh slide here, and we do have our landscape architect on if we have more questions on it, but I would just want to show uh, in addition to all the, you know, the improvements, the benefits that um, you know, Ken uh and um uh Phil had gone through on the site, uh, we are, we have a pretty extensive landscape improvement. And and what uh Jeff was referring to is this back area uh that is the private road North of Bond, which is owned by the um uh North Airmont Gardens. And we have an agreement with them to even add additional landscape into that vegetated area to increase the buffer space between us and the neighbors. And then we did the same, again, this is a private road, again, on their property. We're in enhancing the landscaping even even further. Uh, and that's what's shown in this plan.
Um, Dave and Jeff, just so you know, I did send via email the traffic study, the the memos and the um traffic engineer for the village so that they could see all that information and have it available.
Excellent, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And and just uh really quickly on the uh, the additional exit, there was one, you know, potential concern mentioned by the the owners of the Airmont Gardens in that uh, you know, they they were a little concerned that maybe somebody might inadvertently try to turn left off of North to Bond into their thinking it may be one of their residential streets. So uh, what I agreed to do is to beef up the uh no entry signage on North the Bond so that it would be very obvious that that is not uh a right turn um that it's an exit only for the property.
All right, Ken, have you finished your presentation?
Well, does the board have any questions? Uh, the one thing I'd like to make
Yes.
The one thing I'd like to mention before you ask the question is that uh, the Department of Planning, their uh letter to the zoning board is almost identical to the one they sent to the planning board previously. And we addressed all those issues with the planning board. Uh, and that's, we made our cha- changes based on our discussions with the planning board. So those issues in the letter uh stated May tenth, uh, we've addressed those uh previously.
Uh, okay, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman. I'll feed those letters uh into the record. So um, I guess the problem that these are kind of less than altogether. But um, I guess it would be appropriate to do it now. All right, first I'm reading um, there's a letter from the Department of Planning of Rockland County. Uh, Acting Commissioner Douglas Schutz, May tenth, twenty twenty one. Um, Ray, General Municipal Law Review. Um, and item Dunkin' Donuts Drive Through fourteen North Airmont Road. A variance application to construct an addition and add a drive through to an existing gasoline station, convenience store and fast food takeout establishment on the point seven four acres in the VC zoning district. Variance is are requested for a lot of area, lot with front setback on North to Bob area, avenue, front yard, North to Bond Avenue and South Airmont Road. Size setback, total size setback, side yard, near setback, near yard, residential buffer requirement and the development, development, development coverage ratio. A twenty five percent parking waiver from the planning board is requested. Uh, the northwest corner of the intersection of North Airmont Road and North of Bond Avenue. Uh, reason for referral is uh North Airmont Road is the county road eighty nine, New York State through a interstate eighty seven and two eighty seven down in Ramapo and the village of Baffo Bello will have interest in this. The county of Rock, the Department of Planning has reviewed the above item. Act none of the terms of the above G M L powers as those vested by the county of Rock and Charter. I and Commissioner of Planning hereby disapprove. Um, so that means you would need a super majority here, so this is to be approved. That would be four out of five yes votes uh instead of the usual three. The traffic now, item one, the traffic patterns associated with the gasoline station and a drive through fast food establishment are mutually incompatible. It cannot both be adequately accommodated on an undersized parcel. A drive through funnels vehicles for a single access point. While the gasoline station can create haphazard traffic patterns, vehicles queue up and jockey for an open pump station. The onsite traffic circulation has significant deficiencies and creates several points of conflict. Some of which will likely produce the traffic overflows onto the county highway. Two exiting vehicles stopped on the North Airmont Road entrance would effectively block an entering vehicle from accessing the power of their clean pumps or parking areas. Any subsequent entering vehicles would be forced to stop within the entrance apron and potentially create creating an overflow into the highway. Vehicles entering from North to Bond Avenue may attempt to shortcut a line by dropping through the bump area. Also, the gasoline pumping area bisects the site. And along with the drive through aisle separates the northern parking spaces from the North to Bond Avenue exit. Vehicles parked in the northern parking space wishing. Vehicles parked in the northern parking space wishing. Uh, let's see, whatever we. Wishing to proceed north on North Airmont Road. Will have to go through the pump area in order to exit into North de Bon Avenue. Which will create a hazardous point of conflict. It is likely that a few of vehicles between the north, the the north de Bon Avenue entrance. And the drive-through entrance could form before, since they will be forced to stop for possibility, possibly an exited. Extended vehicle period of time at the interior stop sign adjacent to the North Avenue Road entrance. These vehicles were blocked vehicles attempting to enter or exit. The parking spaces at the southeastern corner of the lot. Well, a vehicle stopped at the interior stop sign adjacent to the North Airmont Road entrance will have a reduced. Site distance compared to vehicles leaving the property as they attempt to cross an active entrance. A truck parked in the proposed loading zone will block two of the parking spaces around the southern part property line. It will also impede the visibility of the driver in the adjacent parking space. Which could create a hazardous conflict between exiting vehicle, pedestrians exiting the structure. Overall, these deficiencies will create hazardous conflicts between pedestrians. Vehicles using the drive-through and vehicles using the gasoline pumps. And will likely cause traffic to overflow onto the county highway. This application does not adequately demonstrate how safe access for users. Of all the services on site can be provided on an undersized parcel. This application must be disapproved. Well, that is item one. Item two. The many developments that does not comply with the political bulk standards can set an undesirable land use precedent. Result in the overutilization of individual sites. The proposed lot area is thirty-seven percent of the required minimum. And the lot width is only fifty-five percent of the required minimum. The North de Bon Avenue front setback is sufficient by thirty-three percent. Both front yards require a ninety-five percent variance to be compliant. The side and rear setback are deficient by twenty-eight percent and thirty-eight percent respectively. The side and rear yards are only ten percent and forty-three percent compliant respectively. Required buffers in the residential area have been eliminated and the development coverage ratio exceeds the maximum standard by seven percent. The ability of the existing infrastructure to accommodate increased intensity. Uh, of use on undersized partial is a countywide concern that must be evaluated. This evaluation must consider whether local roads will become more congested and sewer system storm water management system. And the public water supply will be overburdened. The village must consider the cumulative and regional impacts of permitting such development. Even the concerns in the uh comment that arise from placing an intense use on an undersized partial. And the extent of the required variances, the application must be disapproved. And the property developed in a manner more consistent with the bulk requirements of the village. Okay, now is item two. I, the following comments address our additional concerns about the proposal. This proposal. Item three, refer the April twenty-one, twenty-two thousand twenty-one letter for the Rockland County Highway Department. Right away permit must be obtained from them for starting any construction activity in the site. Item four, review must be completed by the Rockland County Department of Health and Sheriff's with Article nineteen mosquito control. Uh, the Rockland County sanitary code. Item five, a view shall be completed by the New York State authorities already if any required permits obtained. Item six, applicants must comply with all comments made by the former fire department in their letter from November second, twenty twenty.
Suzanne, do we have that letter? The uh.
I'm not sure if I put it that way to the planning board. I can make sure you get it.
That's okay, thank you.
Okay, item seven. The town of Ramapo and the village of Montebello are two of the reasons this proposal was referred to this department for review. The Ramapo boundary is approximately three hundred and sixty feet northeast of the parcel. The Montebello boundary is approximately two hundred feet north of the parcel. New York State General Municipal Law states that uh. Purposes of section two thirty-nine dish I, or this one, not this I. And two thirty-nine dish M, and two thirty-nine dish N shall be bring pertinent intercommunity and countywide. And zoning site play, site play and subdivision considerations to the attention of neighboring municipalities. And having jurisdiction. Thus reviewed, they include intercommunity and countywide consideration. In respect to the compatibility of various land uses with one another. Traffic generating characteristics of various land uses in relation to the effect of traffic on the other land. Other land uses and to the adequacy of existing and proposed. There are so smooth, several fair facilities. And protection of the unique character if you got the dominant land use population density and the relation between the residential. And non-residential area. Addition, section two thirty-nine, gave in and. It's an active to encourage the coordination of land use development and regulation among adjacent municipalities. And result development occurs in a better, that is supportive of the goals and objectives of that area. The town of Ramapo and the village of Montebello mostly given the opportunity review proposal as impact on community character, traffic, water quality. And quality graded stormwater runoff and sanitary sewer services. The areas of the countywide concern noted above that directly affect these municipalities must be considered. And sounds naturally addressed as well as any initial concerns about the proposal. Uh, Suzanne, do we send this out the comment to the for town of Ramapo and village of Montebello? Suzanne? Can you hear me?
He's muted.
Suzanne, can you unmute yourself?
I apologize, I I muted myself to get the Tolman letters. When you're done, I'll read them. But yes, I did send them to Montebello and to the town of Ramapo. We have not received any comments for planning or zoning from either of them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eight, continuing with this letter, item eight. Public sewer main, public sewer mains require extensions within a right of way. For an easement shovel reviewed and approved by the Rockland County Department of Health prior to construction. Nine, the proposed landscaping along North Airmont Road and North de Bon Avenue is located beyond the property line. Well, and within the county right of way. And the private road portion of North Valley Avenue, which is a further indication of the overutilization of. Approvals of these encroachments must be granted by the appropriate entity, or the landscaping must be relocated within the property. Item ten, of the twelve provided parking spaces, the two spaces in the southeastern corner of the site labeled TBR. The application must clarify if these spaces are to be removed. To be, that sounds like what TBR stands for, okay. Uh, if they are to be removed, requested waiver of the uh, quaver of. What you call it, question waiver of. From the planning board, a twenty-five percent of the required parking spaces would not be sufficient. An additional variance would be required. Any additional variances, various applications must be forwarded to this department for review. If the two spaces do not be moved, then the cyclone must be corrected. Dedicated drive-through lane along the North Airmont Road property line does not appear to have an adequate width. The cyclone in case that there is less than eighteen feet between the fuel pump and the edge of the curb. Attracting the width of bar vehicles in face and space. The person to operate a gasoline pump, there would be less than a ten-foot travel aisle for a crew, crewed vehicles. The cyclone does not appear to indicate there is a ten-foot wide aisle. But the aisle is approached upon by, the second, cyclone does appear to indicate that it is a. Ten-foot wide aisle, but the aisle is approached upon by the curb. The narrow travel aisle will create a hazard for pedestrians serving or evading vehicles using the pumps. Drive-through aisle must be widened to prevent conflict with vehicles at the top. Item twelve, the plant, the cyclone indicates a vacuum station, tire air pump station located next to the most about every entrance. Vehicles using these stations will block access to vehicles entering the site, using the two adjacent parking spaces. Vacuum and pump stations must be relocated. Item thirteen, the application material provided indicates that variances are required for the most about every front yard and setback. Which is consistent with the property being considered a corner lot. However, these materials also indicate that a various of the total size setback is required. Which is not consistent with the requirements of a corner lot. Since the North de Bon Avenue is a private road, is unclear the village should consider the site a corner lot or not. The board must determine which intersection is, which interpretation is correct. And the application materials must be amended as appropriate. The public hearing notice must be reviewed and if it contains inaccurate information, reissue. Uh, Suzanne, did we uh do that?
Yes.
Okay. Right, one more page to this. Item fourteen, access to the garbage enclosure is provided alongside the drive-through aisle. Which will limit the maneuverability of garbage trucks, the vehicles are queued. Advocate must demonstrate that the garbage closure can be safely accessed or the enclosure must be relocated. The snow storage areas on northeastern and southeastern corners of the property also contain or locate behind signs, landscaping. The light filter, the fire airport, the tire air pump and the vacuum station. In addition, hot piles of snow in these locations will be driver visibility at the two adjacent points. The cyclone must be amended to provide snow storage areas that will not impede driver visibility and are compatible with all other site improvements and features. Item sixteen, the air force downspins are allowed by special permit of the village board. You request the opportunity to review the special permit needed to implement proposal as required by the New York State General Municipal Law. Item seventeen, pursuant to General Municipal Law, section two thirty-nine and two thirty-nine in. If any other conditions in this DML overview are overwritten by the board. The local land use board must file a report with the county commissioner of planning for the final action taken. If the final action is contrary to the recommendation of the commissioner, the local land use board must state the reasons for such action. In addition, pursuant to executive order zero one dash two one, two zero one seven, signed by county executive day. On May twenty-two, twenty seventeen, county departments are issuing a county permit license for approval. Until report is filed with the county commissioner of planning. The applicant must provide to any county, any jurisdiction of the pattern. One, a copy of the commissioner report approving the proposal, propose action. Or two, a copy of the commissioner's planning recommendations to modify or disapprove, propose action. A certified copy of the land use board statement overriding the recommendations to modify or disapprove. And a stated reason for, for the land use board override. Okay, signed by Douglas Schutz, Acting Commissioner of Planning.
Um, I I have a question for um, Lou. Um, one of the comments that the county made. Um, in the GML. Was that this is subject to a special permit of the village board. Is this, is that accurate? As a fast food uh establishment.
I'm checking on that right now.
Yeah, and I looked it up, it's of the planning board. Special permit for the planning board.
We changed that with the comprehensive plan that special permits go from the village board to.
Yeah, that, well, that's, I mean, I uh questioned that.
Okay, I know.
But um. But the other thing I question is, in zoning. Um. The use. Has to come before uh everything else. So. Um. So in terms of. Um. Seeking variances. Um, for a use. That hasn't yet been approved. Um, seems contrary to. Uh. Standard zoning procedure.
Uh, Dan, I found the code for that, it's two ten twenty-one.
Yep.
And it's uh, eight, fast food restaurants are subject to a special permit.
Right. So. How do you get? Variances which relate to a use that hasn't been granted.
And the planning board sent us to the zoning board.
Ken, I'm I'm not.
Yeah.
Um. I I'm just trying to make sure this is done right. Um, I I'm not gonna uh disagree with how we ended up here tonight. Um. But. That comment uh in the GML, number one, the first thing I thought of those. I don't think we have any special permits anymore that are issued by the village board, so that triggered. My next thought, and that was, well, hold on, if this project is subject to a special permit. Then the use. Um, needs to come before. Um, anything else.
And I just sent you something.
Yep.
Okay.
How uh. Uh, Suz- Suzanne?
Yes.
Um, how close is the Panera file to where you're sitting?
I can get it, that's why I brought it up. You, you want me to bring up the variance file?
Uh.
Okay.
Well, the question is, did they get?
But do you want me to get the resolution or the actual file? With, or their.
Resolution.
Their GML, their resolution?
Yeah, the resolution.
Okay, that's easier. The ZBA resolution, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, ZBA and planning.
Okay. All right, which do you prefer first? I'm doing zoning?
Sure.
Okay. All right, they have variances and a special permit. I'm just gonna let this person back in. In conjunction with the removal of an existing Friendly's restaurant to construct their restaurant with the drive-through with the subdivision and mounted signs. What specifically am I looking for?
Which came first?
We did.
Did they get?
They did the variances before planning. Is, was that what you're asking me, which came first?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, one second. They got the variances in June, and then they got their final site plan approval in July of nineteen.
Yeah, but what about their special permit?
Special permit. Hold on, somebody's trying to get it. The special permit was planning. Yep, Panera's seeking a special use required for minimum lot size. So they've, they got it for the fast food restaurant. As there are unique circumstances whereby the existing proper variance is created a tax lot. So that was first, if I'm reading this correctly.
Planning board was first or zoning board?
Planning board.
So.
And it does state in the in the planning board resolution in the they did, they, the special permit for fast food, the drive-through was July twenty-fifth, where is the resolution for the ZBA was June, I'm sorry, June twenty-fourth. So they got the variance before they, they got their final site plan approval.
Okay.
Does that help?
Well, it, it helps in terms of
process?
It's something that is of a similar nature to this application that happens to be located right across the street.
Right.
And we should handle things consistently.
Yes. I don't know if, I did pull from the, from the planning file. I don't know if you want me to read the torment fire memos? Or just provide a copy? It's up to you, Arthur.
Copies are good.
Okay, there was a subsequent letter to the November second letter. There's a December eighth letter that Rockland County Planning also received because Doug Schutz is copied on it, but I'll, I'll put both in. The only, basically in a nutshell, they no longer have the concern with the fire truck plan because of the, the turn on the southwest rear portion of the driveway. And the only thing that they recommended as a condition of approval is that it be sprinkled with a fire sprinkler system. But I will make sure you all have copies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With regard to the GML, not only does the fact that they voted to disapprove require a super majority, but individual comments, many of the individual comments contained in it would also separately require overrides. And when you override, you gotta give your rationale for why you are overriding the comment. And if you read some of these comments, they're quite detailed.
We have other letters to read into the record.
Yep.
Okay, that's my view. Another letter from the Rock County Highway Department dated April twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Dear Ms. Carly, Rockland County Highway Department was in receipt of the reference site plan prepared by Sparacco and Youngblood, the LLC dated oh eight eighteen twenty. The other information is part of the GML review process. Review has been completed now, and we offer the following comments. Cut one, a right-of-way permit must be obtained from the Rockland County Highway Department for starting any construction activity in the site as proposed action is approved by the village board. That's the comment. We appreciate you, we appreciate you for the opportunity to review this site plan. Please feel free to contact us at eight four five six three eight oh five oh six oh. With any questions or concerns you may have regarding this matter, thank you. Signed by Ian Rogers, senior engineer level three. Okay. Now there's also a memo here. I don't know if I have to read this into the record from Nelson Pope engineers.
Yes.
I do have to read it.
Yep.
This is a Bevo dated December twenty-eight, twenty twenty from Osmond Barry, E E P T O E P T P. In response to your request, we have reviewed the October twenty, twenty twenty traffic impact study prepared by Mazur Consulting proposed project Duncan Donuts Building Edition and Drive Thru the fourteen North Airmont Road in the Village of Airmont, New York. You are for the following comments on the traffic impact study. Over one, overall, the traffic impact study is complete and adequately addressed the potential traffic impacts associated with the proposed project. And the analysis methodology followed standard traffic engineering practice is acceptable in format. Item two, development of traffic volumes from existing additions through the no build and built condition appears to be arithmetically correct. Item three, stated in the traffic report, traffic anticipated to be generated by the proposed addition was determined based on information published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers as contained in the report entitled Trip Generation tenth edition twenty seventeen, based on land use nine thirty-six for coffee, doughnut, chop, and drive-thru. Even though a significant amount I think generated by the proposed addition would be passed by traffic, no pass-by credits were taken. This methodology is acceptable and very conservative in determining the termination of future traffic conditions. Item four, based on the review of the traffic analysis contained in the traffic study, proposed addition will not significantly impact the operation of the roadways of interception in the vicinity of the site. Item five, the proposed site access qualifications including the elimination of the southerly driveway.
Just going till at least eleven thirty.
Excuse me?
No, I just muted Dan. He was talking.
Okay, item five, continuing in the letter, in the memo, proposed site access qualifications including the elimination of the southerly driveway and restricting left turns on the northerly driveway on Airmont Road should improve traffic circulation and safety. Okay, that's the memo from Nelson Pope.
Two more, Town of Ramapo, Department of Public Works, and Rockland County Store.
Oh, those are the new ones. Oh, man, give me a second. I'm trying to call. I gotta look at my phone. Those are what you said today, right?
The store is, the Ramapo one should be in your packet. Would it be helpful if I read it for you to save you time?
Yeah, that'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, from the Town of Ramapo Department of Public Works dated May twenty-first, May fourth, twenty twenty-one. Dear Ms. Carly, our offices in receipt and has reviewed a plan prepared by Sparacco and Youngblood for the above men reference project, which was last revised April first, twenty twenty-one. We thank you for the opportunity to comment on the plan. Our comments are as follows. A sanitary sewer review is required prior to final site plan approval. The fee is one hundred and twenty-five payable to the Town of Ramapo at the Town of Ramapo Planning Department is due from the applicant. Ordinarily, the town would not begin the review process until this department has received receipt of that above fee has been paid. Please make sure the applicant submits the review fee as soon as possible. Item two, the Rockland County Sewer District, number one, must be given an opportunity to comment on this plan. The comments must be provided to us. Number three, the existing sanitary sewer connection must be upgraded to a six inch if it isn't. Number four, a note stating that the lowest floor to be soared is below the upstream rim elevation and interior check valve is required. Number five, what is to be done to the existing connection under the addition? A sewer permit will be required. Provide appropriate details. Please keep us informed of all developments in this project. Should you have any questions or comments, do not hesitate to contact me. Very truly yours, Paul Gdansky, engineer. Two. And then we have the Rockland County Sewer District Letter dated May third regarding Duncan Donuts Drive Thru. It's their standard letter, but I'll, I'll read it through. Dear Ms. Carly, office has received and reviewed a planometric plan that was last revised in February nineteen, twenty twenty-one, which Sparacco and Youngblood repressed for our above red, the above reference project, excuse me. We thank you for the opportunity to comment on the application. Our comments are as follows. Number one, as this is a non-residential project, Rockland County Sewer District number one's commercial non-residential wastewater questionnaire and the county planning information certification must be submitted to and approved by this office. The owner must sign the wastewater questionnaire. Number two, all permits, fees, and inspections associated with connections to the sanitary sewer main on North Airmont Road are the responsibility of the district. If this property ever requires a new connection to the sewer main, a hookup permit must be obtained from the district prior to starting the sewage portion of this job. This will require approval of the details for connecting to the existing sewers, middle of the county planning information certification, and all necessary insurance bonds, indemnification, and permit fees. Number three, details for sanitary sewer construction, if any, must comply with the district's construction standards and should be shown on the plans. Number four, details for the sanitary sewer connection, if any, on North Airmont Road are subject to the approval of the Town of Ramapo and the Rockland County Highway Department. Number five, approval of this special permit application and the variances for a drive-through at an existing Dunkin' Donuts on a thirty-two thousand ninety-two square foot lot in the V C district does not require the applicant to pay an impact fee in accordance with the Rockland County Sewer Use Law as last amended in two thousand and ten. However, if the use or the occupancy of the property exceeds four units, the district will require further review and the owner may have it to have to pay an impact fee. Please inform us of all developments in this project. Should you have any questions, please contact me. Joseph LaFleanda, engineer two. And then they attached the wastewater district questionnaire that needs to be completed. That's everything we received thus far.
And thank you very much, Suzanne, for reading that so eloquent.
Welcome.
Okay. We're up to the public comment.
Us or?
If, Dave, can you just lower your screen or I'm just gonna not share it anymore so that I can get the full view of everybody? For anyone that wants to raise their hand, or if you'd like to speak, please put your name in the chat.
First, let's make a motion. So make a motion to open this hearing to the public.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, Marty Cabal.
Good, Marty.
And we have a second?
Yes.
You? Okay. Okay, who wants to be recognized first for the public?
I don't have anyone in my chat at this point. I don't see anyone raising their hand physically.
What about?
Oh, John, go ahead.
I don't want to speak out of turn. So like, if there was something else that had to be said, I'm happy to defer.
No.
Well, Arthur, what about discussion from the board as well if we don't have any commentary yet?
Let's say again, please.
Discussion from the board members, or by the board members, if they have any questions of the consultants. I do, I got one.
Marty, then do your comments.
Well, I just have one at this time. I have many questions, but I won't hog the television camera. How many vehicles, you know, coming off the road can the line support on the property? You know, to the, to the serving window. How many vehicles?
Yeah, so we can stack twelve vehicles.
Go ahead, before what's Airmont Road?
Twelve, twelve plus vehicles before we get to Airmont Road from the serving window. There's twelve vehicles there. And before it gets back to Airmont Road, and then also south of the driveway internally, we can stack another five or six vehicles if we ever had to for anybody coming off of North the Bond and coming in that way.
And what's to prevent, you know, spillback? You know, twelve cars, you said twelve cars. That's pretty, you know, fairly generous. But what's to prevent spillback onto North Airmont Road that's traveling north to south?
Well, traveling north to south, we have a right turn in driveway. We have a bypass lane. We, you know, we have twelve vehicles before we get even back to the driveway and probably another one or two before we get, you know, onto the roadway.
So you don't anticipate that being a potential spillback problem onto flow of traffic on North Airmont Road? You know, heading in a southbound direction on that side of.
Yes, so, so typically, we want to provide at least ten vehicles to stack. We have, as I said, twelve vehicles before it even gets anywhere near the driveway. And then we have another, at least another two, almost three vehicles before it would get out onto the highway. So you're getting up to fourteen to fifteen vehicles just there. And then.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And then also, anybody coming from the south on North Airmont Road would come in off of North the Bond and we would have them, you know, stack along that eastern edge where we're widening the area there.
Does the Dunkin' Donuts Corporation, you know, with their franchisees, have a average of serving time per vehicle? I know there were various different types of menus and things take different periods of time to prepare. But is there, you know, is there an express average time between rolling up to the window and then getting your service or, or what? You know, I'm just curious.
So I can speak to that. The, we have a history of getting cars from the menu board and then exiting the, the drive-through at the window of under a hundred and fifty seconds. So, you know, there's, there's a six-car stack about between the menu board and the, the pickup window. And we get cars through that in less than a hundred and fifty seconds.
And just to elaborate a little more, please keep in mind, you know, the, the, the definition between fast food, right? So it's a Dunkin', a Dunkin', we're not cooking anything, right? It's not, it's not like a Burger King, a Chick-fil-A where they're actually preparing. So it's a Dunkin, a Dunkin, we're not cooking anything, right? It's not, it's not like a Burger King, a Chick-fil-A where they're actually preparing and cooking a, a burger or whatnot. Uh, we're basically serving donuts and coffee out the windows. That, that's why the hundred and fifty seconds so fast. So when we talk about ten, ten to twelve cars, that, that's a lot of stacking. Uh, the six cars between, yeah, the six cars.
Sorry, the, um, this, the, the actual product mix in this store weighs more heavily towards beverages, which is an even faster transaction. So, uh, I would anticipate that we're gonna be well below that hundred and fifty seconds.
How do you gather that it's gonna be, you know, virtually beverage, you know, all beverage as opposed to, uh, you know, other food items that Dunkin Donuts does provide?
Well, it won't be all, but we, i- if you remember, we are already serving out of this location. So we have an existing product mix that, uh, you know, we're basing that on.
Okay.
And it, it is heavily skewed towards beverages.
All right, you know, obviously my concern is, uh, spill back onto North Airmont Road and creating, uh, you know, a negative traffic scenario of flowing traffic, you know, I think it's a reasonable, um, a reasonable concern.
Absolutely. We are, uh, concerned about that as well, but feel very comfortable with the, the stacking that's, that's on this property. Um, we, to be frank, I mean, we, we haven't, we have a lot of drive-throughs. Not many of them have this long of a stack.
In, in the addition of the bypass lane as well, in case there is, you know, backed up traffic, they could still get by.
So are you familiar with, uh, the franchise on Route fifty-nine and West Nyack, sort of opposite the Palisades Center?
I, I'm familiar with it, but not intimately. I couldn't speak to any of the details there. It's a different operator than from us.
Okay, no, I was just curious as to, uh, cause I'm familiar with the property as to the, uh, amount of vehicles stacking, that's all. But I think you've, uh, answered my question regarding, uh, the number of vehicles and, you know, the potential for stacking and the rate of time or the amount of time it takes to, uh, serve the customer and have the vehicle, uh, exit the property. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Does anyone else have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I was pretty, yeah, Arthur, I was pretty much in favor of what Marty was saying, it too, my concern with, um, coming in and, coming in off of, uh, North Airmont Road and or people coming in and cutting off the people in line, but, you know, the, the south part of the line. But I hopefully, I don't think you can see more than twelve cars in line at a time. Um, but my other major concerns are, you know, I can see they were coming here for a handful of variances, a little less. But, uh, twelve to thirteen variances, that's a lot. And what my other concern is, and I'm gonna echo off our, our council, is the Department of Planning with the eighteen issues that we're gonna have to somehow deal with on here and do overrides. There's a lot there and I'm very concerned about that as well. Uh, and listen, I'm in favor of Dunkin Donuts. I love you guys, but I don't know. And that's, I'm.
Can I just address the number of variances? And it kind of goes back to, uh, one of the things that Ken spoke to uh, out of the gates and that I tried to reinforce. Virtually all of the variances that we're requesting have to do with impact on the neighboring, uh, pieces of property. And, uh, I just, I, I think that when you look at the, the reality of the situation, uh, there is only one neighbor, um, that could possibly have a valid concern and they're in favor of the project. And we're, and we're over two hundred and fifty feet away from their closest building. So really the, uh, aside from the, uh, waiver for the parking spaces, almost all of the other variants that we're requesting have to do with the impact on the neighboring properties.
Uh, could you, uh, Mr. Chairman, can I make another comment, please? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, continue.
Okay, uh, with respect to, uh, you know, the fact that it is a large, um, I don't know how many pumps are there, but there are quite a bit. You know, it's a large fueling facility as well, concerned about the competition for, uh, you know, pump jockeying and, uh, you know, getting onto that queue line. Um, can you address that? Um, and tell me how that won't be a confusing thing and, uh,
I, I'll take a stab at it and certainly Steve or Dave can also speak to it, but currently those pumps serve almost as a parking space for people walking into the Dunkin Donuts to get their coffee and, uh, and, you know, donut or whatever. Uh, whereas now, under the, the revised plan, the, the bulk of the traffic into or for the, the product out of Dunkin Donuts is gonna come through the drive-through. I'm predicting that in excess of eighty percent of our sales are gonna go through the drive-through. Um, so we're gonna be really, in a lot of ways, when you look at the property as it exists now versus what we're proposing, we're improving the flow on the, on the property. Yes, it's small. Um, but the, the work that Steve has done with designing the property based on the feedback from the planning board, um, I think really facilitates movement on the, on the, on the site and improves, uh, the, the parking uh, situation so that we have less crossover with pedestrian traffic and, uh, you know, cars navigating through the, through the parking lot. We're taking a lot of that traffic behind the building away from the parking, so the pedestrian traffic's gonna be pretty much unobstructed.
And, and just elaborate a little more on that, on the site itself with the new layout, um, we actually gained two parking spaces. So there was a correction in the, the commissioner's letter. Uh, these parking spaces are not being eliminated, they're being proposed. So, so we're not seeking an additional variance here. The existing parking spaces today on the lot is ten, we're increasing that to twelve, right? So with, with, with Jeff was saying, those current customers are, that are using some of the lot and congesting the lot today to go into the Dunkin as exists today, and they're parking the fire lane, leaving the cars at the gas pumps. They're now moving to these ten to twelve spots around the back of the building. Right? So it's really moving some of that congestion that's currently existing on the gas station property today and moving it onto the real estate behind the building and really freeing up some of this, freeing up some of the traffic, uh, on the site. So it, it, net, net, it's, it's, if there is an improvement, we added more cars and we're moving a lot of that traffic around the back of the building.
Go ahead, Steve.
You're running a loading zone and you're also improving the traffic collection on the site as well. On top of everything, everything, everybody else is saying about circulation.
Thank you, Steve.
And then just one other item really quickly that was brought up in the planning commissioner's, uh, letter, and I don't know of the eighteen uh, comments, which one it was, but the, the width of the the aisle there along North Airmont Road, I think was incorrectly stated and it was actually addressed, Steve widened that.
Yeah, item, item number eleven, Jeff.
Okay.
Item, item number eleven, and we had addressed that because we had widened that area, that gray area on Steve's drawing where we have the designated drive-through lane. Uh, if, if you zoom in there, you, you see it's two ten-foot lanes. So there's a ten-foot lane for the drive-through and there's a ten-foot area near the pump, uh, fueling position, uh, which is more than adequate for that area. So you can see, we have twenty feet curb to curb with that improvement.
Right, that, that, so that statement, they, they had in the letter, he referred to it as eighteen feet?
Correct.
This, this, we don't have eighteen, it was expanded for twenty feet, so we have ten feet uh, space for the vehicle filling fuel and then a clear ten feet for a car bypassing it.
Correct.
That, that was incorrect, uh, that we corrected in the letter.
I think there was another concern about, uh, you know, the dumpster or, or the dump truck having adequate, uh, room to, to maneuver. And, uh, I, I know that Steve took that into consideration when he was designing that part of the, the property as well. And the, the turning radius is ample, uh, and I think we only need to concern, be concerned with it being a front-loading, uh, dumpster or dump truck.
So, so in the plans to, to Jeff's point, this, this bypass lane is, is intended for emergency vehicles and we've gotten a positive feedback from the fire, fire department with that. They're very pleased with that access. And then it also addresses the dumpster. So the dumpster's in this position, a full-size vehicle can easily pull in, uh, back up and then, then exit the property, where they can't do that today without obstructing the service station, customers, gas pumps, et cetera. So it's all done within the property. So that, that is an improvement and that was kind of noted incorrectly in the letter as well.
Uh, can I ask a question about your comments to, uh, comment eleven?
You're hard to understand, Sheldon.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question about, uh, you know, that, uh, comment eleven on the, uh?
I think you gotta back off your microphone a little bit.
I'll try. You, you says that it's actually twenty seasons now that, that drive through uh, near the pumping stations and really, um, twenty feet and not eighteen feet as noted in the letter. Is the, is that, is the gray bar actually part of the lane or is that?
Yes, so the gray, the gray area is where we are widening. We're widening, we're removing the curb and widening that. That's where we're getting the, the, the other two feet to get the ten-foot lane. That was a modification to the plan to get a full ten feet and, and an adequate, more than adequate ten foot near the, uh, pump for the fueling position.
And I just have another question. Um, drivers entering from North Airmont, if they wanted to go to the pumping station as opposed to the drive-through. It, it seems a little difficult for them to head that way.
So if, if they're coming, if they're coming from the north. If, if they're coming from the south, you're saying to get in? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Coming from the south, they would make a left. Right now, uh, the, the south driveway is being closed. You are not permitted, and we're reinforcing that with additional signing. You are currently not permitted, based on the way the permit was issued from the county originally, to make a left turn from North Airmont Road into the gas station. You have to make that left turn at the signal. Once you make the left onto North de Bond Avenue, then you make a right turn in and you can pull into any of the fueling positions that are open. Also, when you're.
I'm saying if you're coming on North Airmont and you wanna make a right into the, into the stations.
Yeah, so if you're coming from the north and you make a right turn in, you come in and you can get into the pump islands. And as I said, we have stacking for over twelve vehicles before we get back to where that area is. So anybody coming, making the right turn in to get to the gas, uh, fueling would come in and make a, a a quick move to the left to go to any of the pump islands.
Are those pink lines? Are those on actual, uh, concrete or some sort of barrier or just? No, no.
There's, there's no barrier there. It's just stripe, it's striping, correct?
I'm trying to figure out who's, who's making that noise. I've tried to mute everybody. I don't know who it is.
If you can mute.
I, I can't hear.
I don't know if you can do that.
I can't, I can't even hear you.
Oh, I was just saying that may should mute everyone.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
But you know what it is? I can't really see everything because of the plan. I can't see everybody, but I'm muting them one by one. There we go. I don't know who it is. Okay, I figured it out. Sorry. Whoever wants to speak can unmute. Dave, okay.
Sheldon, did we answer your questions? I.
Wait, Sheldon, you're muted. I gotta unmute you. Okay, go ahead, Sheldon. You gotta un, unmute yourself.
Okay, good, thank you. Yeah, I, I was wondering if you could respond to the second paragraph I've commented on the one about having two exiting vehicles on the North Airmont Road entrance effectively blocking, uh, entrance to the pumps or parking.
Okay, so in terms, I believe what they're referring to is at the exit. Uh, now remember, you can only make a right turn in, right turn in and a right turn out. Right. If, if somebody is coming in the drive-through aisle, coming from the south on the site, all they have to do is look for somebody coming down southbound on North Airmont Road, making that right turn in because no one is permitted to make a left in off of Airmont Road. So when they stop there, when those vehicles are stopped, they have to allow the vehicles to e- e- enter. And anybody exiting is only a right turnout only. And the majority, since we've now provided, uh, all the, the drive-through traffic exits at the backside now. So we don't have any more of the Dunkin drive-through traffic in the internal part of the site. Uh, people that are at the gas pump islands have room, uh, to come out at the signal if they desire because a, a lot of times traffic backs up from the signal up to this driveway. And based on the counts that we had, there is not a lot of traffic that goes out that driveway, uh, because of that. But once that traffic dissipates, then anybody else could move through that area.
What, what I, what, what they seem to be saying is if you have exiting vehicles from the, exiting, making a right turn. Um, you know, on, on, they could effectively block any, any entering vehicle from then being able to turn left into the pump, um, to access the pumps, which to be fair, I don't think that's a new issue, but I just wondering if you could respond to that.
Yeah, so I think our plan improves that in terms of we've gotten rid of the parking spaces up at the north end except for three spaces. And the, in terms of anybody at the pump islands that want to go south, they also have the ability to go out on the driveway on North the Bond. And even if I was, uh, facing north at one of the pump islands, I can easily maneuver to turn around and come out, uh, north the bond at the traffic signal and more easily get out onto North Airmont Road. So there could be vehicles waiting to make that right turn. Uh, but also as you come in from the north, that area that's striped in pink, that's not a raised area. So you could actually drive over that area right in there. So if there were two cars parked, you could come in and either use the bypass lane or drive over that area if you wanted to get to one of the other pump islands in the front.
I don't wanna take that much time, but can you, um, you, you know, what, what, what type of numbers does the pumping station have? Uh, or, or the base, all the pumping stations.
There's, there's twelve fueling positions in this station today. And in a one-hour period, uh, the, the highest time periods, we have roughly sixty to seventy vehicles entering the site today. That's not just the pump islands. That's going to all the uses, the convenience store, the pump islands, the existing Dunkin, okay? So, uh, not all of them are, are fueling. Um, of those, you know, some people, as, as Jeff had pointed out, some people actually park in front of the pump island just to go into the convenience store or to go to Dunkin Donuts. So there's more than enough capacity there and, um, you know, we, there's plenty of fueling positions for people to pull into. And i- in between the center of the pump islands, unlike many stations, if you see on this drawing, there's actually a wide area, uh, between the, the, the four fueling positions closest to the building. So that actually allows vehicles, if I was sitting at the, let's say, fourth vehicle away from the building closer to Airmont Road and I wanted to go back out to the south, I can easily make a maneuver and either go down that aisle or go down in front of the store. or go down in front of the store to get back out to the signal, especially if I want to go back to the north because I have to come out at the signal.
Or take the bypass lane around the the back.
Yeah, or I could use the bypass lane if I wanted to do that, but I have multiple options here to get away from either the gas pumps and not have to go out that that northerly driveway, which is is not the easiest, you know. Drive today.
Understood, thank you.
Um can I can I uh make a point? Um. Everything you guys are talking about is very important. But um unless uh in going through the uh G M L dated May tenth two twenty twenty one. Um you can't find specific reasons uh that you would have to detail for each and every um one that had to be overridden. Um uh I think uh that that really ought to be uh the main focus. Um because without that, um this is going nowhere.
Can I ask a question, Dan?
Yes.
Would it be your recommendation that we take that G M L and go point by point and come back to another meeting and present each one of those items?
Um.
That's a good idea.
I I I I uh think that would be uh a uh very good idea, to put it mildly. Um. Um.
Can you do that in writing?
Yeah, they would, they they would.
Respond to each item in writing.
Yeah. The ones that needed to be overridden and um Ken will know which ones would need to be overridden. Um but I would also deal with the uh disapproval aspect and um um whatever you can offer to uh um distinguish the way that they are looking at this application and um it may be wrong or um maybe uh not taking into account existing conditions and the like.
And so with that written response, would we need to submit that in advance, Suzanne?
Yes.
Okay.
Two weeks before the meeting so that they can review it. Um I mean, I if you want to do a week, Arthur, that's up to you. A week would be fine, but it's it usually.
It would probably be better because it's very deeply complicated to think here.
So two weeks?
Two weeks, yes.
Okay.
Uh uh yeah, do you have a problem with two weeks?
Oh, no, I'm not. No, he was just asking when.
I just for clarification.
Yeah, normally I ask for things like four to four and a half, almost five weeks because I have to send out for comments and they have thirty days, so I've got to package it up and get it out. That we don't need comments, they're responding to the comments. So that's why. But that being said, I mean, I the next meeting, as we discussed, just I just want to reemphasize this is June tenth, the meeting after that is July eighth. But um there's an application after this that I don't know if we'll get to. So that's a public hearing that would go on next month automatically. Um I have a new application also that will be a public hearing at the June meeting. Uh and then we have the continuance of the the previous application. So I just wanted to point all of that out.
In other words, we're definitely going to roll that next month, is that what?
I don't know that we will get through all of that. I can't answer that.
Right.
I'm just stating the facts so you all are aware. So per- perhaps if you need even more time to respond, I don't know. I already have a submission for Ju- July as well.
Excuse me, Suzanne, how do you decide the order?
Okay.
For the agenda.
Hearings go first. The continued public hearings typically go after, correct, Dan?
Yes.
And typically it goes in the order that they're on. So for example, the person who's third tonight. I don't know that will be heard tonight. I can't say that yet, but typically we have a cutoff of at eleven if you haven't been heard. They would be first on the next application and then the new submission that I have and sent out for G M L uh on Monday would be second. And then more than likely the cemetery because they were continued first, so you would be last. Unless you go to July and I do have a submission for July. So that's a new public hearing, but that that's how it works. I don't, I don't pick and choose. It's just the order that they were on previously and whether or not they're continued or a new public hearing.
And and wanna, I want to make clear.
Religious applications always go first.
Yes, I I want to make clear why. Uh I want to make clear why this is so important. Um number seventeen of the G M L says pursuant to G M L section two thirty nine uh M and two thirty nine N, if any of the conditions of this G M L uh review are overridden by the board. Then the local land use board must file a report with the county uh commissioner of planning of the final action taken. If the final action is contrary to the recommendation of uh the commissioner, the land, the local land use board must state the reasons for such action. In other words, you got to be detailed about uh what you're overriding and why you're overriding.
Understood.
And then we send that along with um uh assuming you got your approval uh.
An override email. I mean, an override resolution, sorry.
Yeah.
So Suzanne, what is what is the cutoff date? Is it May twenty seventh for the uh? Do you have these responses in for the June tenth, maybe?
June tenth, what, yes, that's two weeks prior.
I think we can get the responses in by then.
Um and if if it's July eighth, then it would be June twenty fourth.
But if we're in for the June meeting and for some reason we get pushed, then that gives us.
Additional time to like July, right? Yeah.
Yeah, the the smart thing is to uh continue it to the June meeting. And if you don't have everything, then at the June meeting, we can continue it to the July meeting without having to do um new public hearing notices and the like.
Okay.
I don't think Ken would disagree with me.
Now, I have additional uh comments I want to make regarding, you know, the standards for the variants and so forth, but I want to wait until all the uh input is in and then I would summarize that at the, you know, the last meeting before you made your decision.
Yeah, I I agree.
Okay, so uh you want to uh adjourn this part of the meeting tonight?
It would be a motion to continue the public hearing with regard to the application of blah blah blah, let's see, we label it.
Three real estate. Um, right?
Yeah. Yours.
And then, you know, fourteenth uh North Airmont Road. To June.
Thursday, June tenth at eight P M via Zoom unless we're meeting in person.
We have a motion?
I'll make that motion um as expressed by counsel, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll second Marty.
Okay, so uh, do you want to call the roll?
Okay, um, member Meyer.
Uh oh, he's got that frozen look.
No, Scott?
Yes.
Well, you gotta, it's good, it's Mayor Meyer, you're gonna have to.
I'll I'll say the first name, I apologize. You're both S's too.
Or just say I and Y, I'm okay with that. Uh I'm I'm in favor, yes.
Okay, Sheldon Meyer.
Actually pronounced Meyer, which is why I responded in error.
I didn't realize that. I apologize.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh so yes, I'm in favor.
Okay, um member Burger, you're muted, Richard.
I'm in favor.
Okay, member Cavell?
Hi.
Chairman Katz?
In favor.
Okay, all in favor, motion carries, five to zero.
Okay.
Okay.
Dan, do you have any party advice for the applicant?
Thank you very much.
No, I I I um.
Your second.
I thought that Mr. Stewart's suggestion was uh uh um rather uh 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 helpful. Um and I agree that Mr. Moran um uh can take the opportunity to uh give his presentation as to how uh the variance is being sought meet the standards um that need to be shown um at the June tenth meeting. Um and hopefully they'll have everything in um two weeks before. Um but if they don't, we also set up a uh a scenario where it would be simple to continue it to July.
Okay, excellent. Very good. Um alright, so this so this meeting is adjourned for as of now. Uh and now the question is for the third applicant, because the page is dark, there's like ten minutes left. Uh another whole complicated application. Um I'm in favor of putting that one off to the next meeting too. Um what does the board say?
I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Chairman.
I I also think that we ought to hear from the applicant's attorney and give him the opportunity to give his opinion.
Uh okay, Mr. Conway, can you speak?
Sure, sure, Mr. Katz and fellow members, it's a pleasure to speak to you guys again, even though the late hour. Um I know my app, my client was hopeful to um to have this heard tonight and I know, I think Rich is still on or Steve is still on, sorry. So I don't know what the board, if the board wants to go past the cutoff or um we can see how far we get, um because I know, you know, I understand the uh this board is very diligent and I appreciate the uh fact that the board treats all the applications very seriously. But so I did want to inquire from the board whether you wanted to hold to the strict eleven o'clock cutoff.
Um, well, I can speak for myself, I I think I do, and the other members can speak for themselves.
Okay.
I agree with Artie and I actually have to go on going to work at eleven P M, so uh I don't have ten minutes left.
Okay, um what I could do for the members that did not hear this uh before, I was just going to do a short recap now just to as you know, as a teaser for the next meeting, since I think according to Suzanne, we would be first on the next scheduled meeting.
Uh, yes.
Okay, yeah, and um because for the benefit of the members that didn't hear this before, it's a continuation. Um, Mr. Denburtzer is the new property owner who's going to reside at the site with his family. And he's going to construct a single-family residence as a right on a flag lot in the R forty, which he's permitted to do. And then by way of historical background, back in two thousand and five, the village zoning board granted variances on this very lot for a lot with street frontage. The lot was first created by subdivision. The old burnt building permit had expired from the former owner. Now this applicant seeks to construct a single-family home larger than the previous uh uh applicant. But the variance relief for the new building permit in order to construct the single-family home with a two-story home and garage, uh we would seek for for um for again for front and side yard, uh it's a flag lot. So previously, it's important to note also that just it's a little unusual as a flag lot as shown on the plan. Under the old code, you got the full credit for the full size of the uh flag lot, including the flag portion. For this application was forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven square feet. Under the old definition, it permitted the flag to be included. Because under the new definition, the way uh Mr. Zumo is interpreting the code and we dealt with this at the first meeting, you have to subtract out roughly sixteen thousand square feet for the portion of the flag, which takes you down for the lot size to twenty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-nine square feet. Uh so as a result of that, we um we require developmental coverage uh variance as well as the previous variance, which they had received really for back in two thousand and five for the side uh side lot and the front lot. Variances or is the um the drainage, we dealt with that before. It was just Rocco and the village engineer had approved the proposed drainage on the site. The um client and the neighbor testified previously that's also at the right next to my client's property at the top of the hill. My client had put in a tree stand. Uh we've also shown in the tree survey which trees are going to be moved. It's currently a wooded lot at the top of the hill. The uh there's still going to be a lot of trees remaining, but the neighbor who supports the application did request a an additional tree stand, which my client agreed to uh install the um a large single-family home, but we did show at the first meeting and analysis, there are other single-family homes uh in the village. This is the first one. It will increase the property value to the remaining uh area. And we don't believe it'll be a detriment to the uh to the surrounding neighborhood. The property behind it is a condominium. Um so where the property sits up on the hill, there's only one immediate neighbor that supports the application. The other neighbors uh would be um in the lower portion of the um of the surrounding neighborhood. Um so it is an unusual property, but it can, the way the property sits, I always look at these applications. Um you always look to see what type of structure you're going to put on, what type of parcel. And this really does work despite the size of the uh proposed structure. It really does work on the lot. Um so we're prepared uh next time to go through more of the details, but um it I just wanted to reiterate to the board, it's a little unusual because of the flag lot. So because of that, that creates uh some additional issues, but the board took that into account and I asked the board to take it into account when they review it again uh next time, because otherwise.
Are you using previous favors?
Uh for a portion of it, yes. And they did reconfigure the driveway area, which we'll talk about uh next time to eliminate some of the um.
Alright, because I'm looking at number five of the G M L.
Yeah, and then I responded to the, I had a response which I believe the board has previously back in December to the G M L. But um we'll we'll go through more of the details next time, but that was just, I just wanted to refresh the board's memory. Um and for the members that did not have the benefit of hearing everything uh last time or the last two times we we presented.
Yeah.
No, go ahead, Dan, I'm sorry.
No, I I just wanted to make it clear to Mr. Conway that uh um the majority of the members um are new members.
Right, that's what I was going to say, and I didn't know if there was any change to your G M L response because I'll pull it out of the December file and provide it.
And I'm I'm going to take a look at that too, just to just.
Alright, otherwise, if you could just resubmit it so that I could.
That's fine.
If there are any changes, I'll make sure that they get it.
Not a problem.
Kev, Scott here. Um I've been with this since the beginning and I'm looking over the blueprints again as I want to verify. I don't see anything changed to be. I don't see anything changed to reduce the overall size of this house, correct?
No, they, they, we eliminated, uh, there was three days in the garage. We knocked down to two. Um, and my client, the homeowner, did wish to address the board, which he'll do at the beginning of next meeting to talk about um, how he came about to the size of the house. And we'll speak to um, the issue of uh, why we're not, we're not seeking to reduce the house drastically from the current uh, from the current configuration at times.
Okay.
Oh, and uh, Kevin, that we did reduce the building. Uh, the architect has reduced the building of about sixty-seven square feet total.
Yes.
Overall, overall, the whole site, there's a hundred eighty-four square feet reduced in the pervious area. And uh, Dan, I'm not sure if there's any pervious pavers on the site. I don't recall seeing them. So I'm not sure where that comment comes from.
Steve, they were, they were, they said shall be provided.
Yeah, we're not proposing any uh, permeable pavers.
I know you're not proposing it, but the county planning department is uh, requiring it.
Why?
I don't.
In the G M L.
Yeah, I don't understand why they would have required permeable pavers. Maybe uh, it doesn't even work with the soils. We don't even know.
Yeah, it's funny, it's funny. I've never seen that before from where they will state specifically, you must use this type of material, but.
Right, I liked the other application. Um, I was looking at that comment and saying, hmm, they better have either done it or they better be in a position to explain why they're not doing it. For an override.
Okay, we'll take a look, but as far as variances for this application, we're looking for lot width. One sixty required, one twenty-five provided, street frontage of a hundred required, twenty-five provided. And those two similar variances were provided back in two thousand five. And then max development coverage because of the flag lot issue, or otherwise we wouldn't have that as an issue. We're uh, twenty percent required, we have twenty-five percent. We'll deal with all of the details uh, next time and I appreciate everyone's um, patience and uh, and I'll make sure that um, Dan has ice cream uh, next time. Prove his mood.
Yep.
Sorry, Dan, I had to watch you eat your ice cream. I had to say something.
Listen, um, before we all mess this up, uh, we're gonna need a motion.
Yes.
Open the public hearing. Um, vote on that and then a secondary motion to continue the public hearing to uh, June tenth at eight P M. So first, does anyone wanna make a motion to open the public here?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Marty here. I make a motion to open the public hearing in the case of, uh, the application of twenty-four South Airmont Road.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Dan, I, it's Suzanne, I have a question. Didn't know we were gonna open this public hearing. Um, since I have a new application for next month, does that mean I have to put the public hearing one first? Before the continue and make this the first continue?
Uh, yeah.
So you would be second. I, I restate what I said.
I mean, otherwise we'd have to re-advertise.
Yeah, I know, I know. That's why I, I brought it up. I don't wanna make them re-advertise. But I don't wanna misquote what I had previously said.
Well.
Just so everyone is aware.
Right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Alright, I think we need a motion to adjourn.
No, 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 I have two things.
Hold on. Did you vote on um, continuing? Okay.
Yeah.
And I got.
Open it. Now I'm going to make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Right.
Application of twenty-four South Airmont Road to June tenth, twenty twenty-one.
No, second Marty.
At eight o'clock.
At eight o'clock.
Via Zoom.
Via Zoom platform.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
We need to vote on that.
Is anyone not in favor?
I think it's unanimous.
Alright. Dan, I don't know if you wanna um, this is about an application that you're not gonna be hearing because of a conflict. Uh, I did.
I think Scott's gonna have a conflict on that too.
Alright, well, it's not gonna be heard until July, but I received the notice of intent for the planning board to become lead agency back in March. I sent it to that current board at that time. And I did forward it to this board on May seventh, but they had to say any disagreement by April twentieth, so I think it's null and valid at this point, cause time has passed. But I just, for the record, wanted to put it into the record.
Get the battery storage going by where Airmont Pub is?
Correct, but Dan is not hearing that application, cause he has a conflict.
And so does Scott.
Yes.
Scott does now?
Yes.
Oh, that's Scott. I'm thinking Scott, you gal, the attorney. I apologize.
No.
Oh, okay, so when we get to that application in July, you'll probably have to recuse yourself then.
I figured that.
I apologize. When you said Scott, I was thinking Scott, you gal, and I have no attorney. I'm sorry. I got confused.
Yeah, could you make sure, ask the ad-hoc to be there at that meeting or that he's gonna recuse himself?
Yes, yes. Um, Jacob is on, so I will, but I will reiterate it and I will get in touch with Robin to please be on as well. Um, and then this is not important, but when we get to November, I didn't realize when I did the planning calendar, which is usually the second Tuesday of the month. I'm saying second Thursday of the month. Um, November eleventh falls for that month. Where, the village is closed. So you'll have to think of another date that works for everyone, but we could deal with that later on in the year.
Yeah, yeah, we got a little bit of time on that one.
I just, I just didn't wanna forget to say it.
And, and I wanna remind everyone, if they haven't done it already, that you have to take the uh, sexual harassment training course.
Yes.
Yep, okay, good. I said.
Okay, they're, they're, they're sending out certificates. They're gonna be a little.
No, you, you um, will call Tammy. Uh, she'll send you uh, a link or an email to sign up. The next one is in June. I can't tell you what.
Twenty-third at ten A M and I've been sending them to all the boards, Dan.
Okay.
Sending to the B O T. I was sending to planning, zoning and architectural.
And they're done by Zoom. Takes a little less than an hour, but it is a mandatory requirement uh, of New York State. And it's, has to be done annually. So this would be for twenty twenty-one.
And I believe I just sent the June link, but I'll resend it to everyone.
Again, again, uh, if I took it today, this morning, or was it yesterday?
No, it was yesterday at five thirty and the next one is June twenty-third at ten A M.
The fact that you automatically were invited into that, you will receive a certificate eventually. And then show it to the village clerk.
Email me that certificate, so I can put it in the file for the insurance.
Hold on, so we're telling him that just because he signed up, but didn't actually attend, that he should hand in the certificate that he's gonna get?
No, no, I wasn't saying that, Dan. You're only gonna get a certificate if you attend.
Uh. I, I, I don't know about that.
I do, I do, Dan.
Yeah, cause I, cause I took the one in April.
Yeah, but.
What's the problem?
No, 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 I took it. I did it yesterday, watched the whole thing. But I could swear they said, if you signed up, you'll be receiving um, a certificate.
That's correct.
Versus taking the class.
Right.
I, I don't know, because I wasn't on yesterday. I only heard from Tammy that because they had fifty-six hundred people take it, they're a little, gonna be, they're a little backed up in getting the certificates out, but I don't know any more than that.
That's exactly what was said, exactly.
Right, but they never said that, I mean, there's no proof for them. Um, I believe, other than you having signed up for it.
Well, no, you had to have entered the meeting by invitation, by punching in and, and you know, opening up in Zoom, they'll know that you entered the meeting, cause you had a distinct um, code. And electronically, that was reported, I would imagine.
I know, I know it's stupid, but I take continuing legal education courses. And the way that they do it is uh, is um, uh, quite different, uh, because theoretically, um, the way that this one was done. Um, you could get real cute, uh, sign in, sign out. Uh, they would never know it and you would get a certificate. With this, with my C L E courses, they give code words at various times during the course and you have no idea. You know, I'm taking a two and a half hour course and there are two code words. If I'm not watching the whole thing and I miss one code word. And actually, I took a course where um, someone interrupted me as they were giving the code word. I ended up having to retake the entire course.
Wow, well, I think in this instance, Dan, it's uh, by, by your honor to have stood there for the hour and listened. Surely you could have, cause it was no camera function. You could have been laying on a couch watching Netflix. I get it, but it's, it's honor, you know, I think.
I think he said honor, honor. I think he said it at one point in the program.
He did.
And, and all the reminders about not only that class or the registration, also the Rockland County Planning, where you have to get certified and you have eighteen months to do it for the new people. I'm sending everything to the village email. If for some reason your village email is not working, you have to tell me. Um, because then I'm not really supposed to be using the personal email. Um, but if for something important, I will, but we need to get you up and running if that's the case.
Did they give credit, uh, if I give uh, my ethics course?
Yes, yes, I, I already cleared that with Arlene.
Okay.
Yes.
So.
That's why I said to you last month, we need to think about a date, but we were waiting for all the new members.
Yeah. Okay.
So you, so think about that.
Okay, alright.
I gotta go.
Alright, good luck with work.
Very good.
Members.
I make a motion that you can adjourn this meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Alright, good night, everybody.
Congratulations on uh, your first uh, Good job.
Thank you, Dad, for keeping it interesting. Take care.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Good night.
Be well, everyone. Be well and good show, Arthur. And nice meeting the new members as well.
Likewise. Look forward to working with all of you.
Oh, and please keep all your packet information, especially for the next meeting. Okay, do not discard it. Thank you.
Yeah, I just put it in my, the back of my car.
Your trunk must be full.
Oh, it's, it's ridiculous.
Alright, good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.